Welcome to the December 15th meeting of the Glendale City Council. I'd like to start by requesting a motion to adjourn our session.
We'll move.
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned. I'd like a roll call, please.
Special meetings.
Yeah, we're adjourned in a special meeting. At the roll call, please.
Roll call for the regular meeting. Council members Drayman.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
The flag salute will be led by Councilmember Najarian and the invocation by Mr. Clark.
Thanks. Will everyone please rise and join me in our pledge to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. With so many important holidays of various faith traditions from Jewish and Christian and others upon us, and the commercialization of them so prominent in our daily lives, it is sadly all too easy to forget the true meaning of this season. On December 25th, 1927, then-President Calvin Coolidge had the following to say to the inner nation about Christmas. "Christmas is not a time or a season but a state of mind. To cherish peace and goodwill, to be plenteous in mercy, is to have the real spirit of Christmas. If we think on these things, there will be born in us a Savior and over us will shine a star sending its gleam of hope to the world." End quote. Let us remember these words not as they apply just to Christmas but as they will apply to our actions and decisions today and throughout the coming New Year. Let us be mindful of that which we have been blessed with but only to use to improve the lives of those less fortunate. Let us promise to respect one another more, be forgiving a little bit more, be charitable a bit more, so that we can all grow together and continue to make Glendale the wonderful place we've decided to call our home. And most importantly, let us remember and pray every day for those who continue to serve in far-off places in our nation's armed forces. Let their service be safe, return be swift, and the burden on their lonely families light. Amen.
Mr. Clark, may we have your report?
The agenda for the December 15th, 2009, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, December 10th, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
All right, next, please.
At 3 is presentation and appointments. At 3A is the proclamation for Glendale Water and Power's 100th anniversary.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I ask Glenn Steiger, general manager of Glendale Water and Power, to step forward, please.
All right, I will read the proclamation. "Whereas the city of Glendale Water and Power is a valuable community asset that contributes substantially to the well-being of the community through progressive approaches to management, customer service, energy efficiency, conservation, environmental protection, public health, and financial support to the city's general fund. The founders of the city of Glendale placed a high value on local control of community services and assets and therefore chose to operate a community-owned, locally-controlled utility and current Glendale residents as customers and owners have continued to have a direct say in utility operations and policies. The city of Glendale Water and Power has operated an electric utility since November 1909 and serves over 207,000 residents and over 70 households and continues to fulfill its obligation to serve the community with reliable electricity and water service. November 2009 marks 100 years of reliable, locally-managed electric and water service. Now therefore, I Frank Quintero, Mayor of the city of Glendale, recognize and celebrate Glendale Water and Power's 100 years of excellent service to the residents of Glendale." And I'll have Mr. Weaver deliver this. He was around when this was first. Together when, prior to electric lights.
And I came along 30 years after you opened doors. And as one civil engineer to another, proud to present this to you. I think we got a grade-one in power department, and I know some years back when we were deciding whether to keep the power plant. Get rid of it. Best decision we made is to keep it. And you've done a great job with the department. A pleasure to be able to recognize the 100th. Not bad. Not bad. Just be around for not 20 more years. That's better.
Councilman Weaver, Mayor Quintero, members of the Glendale City Council. I am sincerely honored to be part of GWP during its 100th anniversary. It is true that 100 years ago, November 1909, the citizens of Glendale authorized $60,000 to acquire the electric assets from the fledgling electric company that served them at that point in time. They paid $23,000 actually for the company and spent the rest of the money extending electric service to the rest of the residents, about 12,000 or 13,000 residents at the time of Glendale. As we moved ahead through the century, 1941 was kind of a key year for GWP in that what is now the Grayson Power Plant, the very first unit at Grayson, was commissioned. It was only 20 megawatts. We've grown substantially since then. And that very same year was the same year that the Metropolitan Water District commissioned the Colorado River Aqueduct. So 1941 was a key year for GWP and for this entire area, but certainly for GWP. As we move ahead today, 100 years later, I'm pleased to be part of a time, a key time in GWP's history where we're transitioning from a traditional utility type of operation to a much more advanced, much more smart way of doing business. We have the Smart Grid project, and we're one of the leaders in that. We are the leader in the treatment of chromium VI on the waterside. So we have a lot to be proud of, and we have a lot to look forward to. And again, I'm very proud to be part of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Steiger. Next, please.
Next, at 3B is appointment of Ms. Teri Dever to the Arts and Culture Commission. This was a nomination by Councilmember Friedman.
Friedman.
Thank you. I am very happy to nominate Ms. Teri Dever to Arts and Culture Commission. She is a professional in the world of arts. She right now is a director for a firm called ArtSpace, which is a national firm, one of the only nonprofit, I think maybe the only nonprofit development company that specializes in creating live-work art housing for artists. So her job there is to work nationally with cities across the country to develop this art space, to do surveys with artists, to find and create permanently affordable space for the arts. As well, she's served for two years as an executive committee member for the Minneapolis Film Commission, although of course she's a Glendale resident, so I don't really know what the Minneapolis connection is. But she's been doing that for two years, and she's been very involved in the city, is a weekly volunteer for the Glendale Humane Society, and a block captain for the Neighborhood Watch Program in Adams Hill. But what impressed me most of all was that she wrote a three-page, single-spaced analysis of what she felt was the pros and cons of the current arts commission. She had a list of programs and initiatives that she wanted to take on and an implementation plan of how she would implement those programs. So it's a very impressive vision, a very impressive resume, and I'm very happy to nominate her for Arts and Culture Commission.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Next, please.
3C is appointment of Ms. Deborah Dentler to the Building and Fire Board of Appeals. This was also a nomination by Councilmember Friedman.
Deborah Dentler is a name who's familiar to many in the community. She served for, I believe, two years as the chair of the Glendale Historic Preservation Commission. She's also a former vice president of Glendale branch of the American Association of University Women and a member of the Friends of the Glendale Library. She's also a former director of the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California. And the reason that she applied for this board is that she is an attorney, and in the past she has worked on housing issues, including slum housing and code enforcement issues in a professional level. I think that she's going to be a real benefit to the commission. She brings a quite extensive skill set besides being an attorney and being familiar in this area, and I'm very proud to nominate her for the Fire and Safety Board of Appeals.
Second.
Comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
For City Council and staff comments.
Councilor's staff comments. Mr. Freeman.
Mr. Mayor, sometimes we get emails. I assume we're all copied on those and sometimes not, but in any case, I received what I thought was an excellent email, very thoughtful and innovative, from a gentleman named Mr. Tovo, T-O-V-O, who, Richard Tovo, who took the time to email me. He is a general contractor and a 20-year resident of Glendale, with some ideas and suggestions regarding solar-derived energy and other issues relating to shoal landfill. And I thought it was quite interesting, and it was something that although, Mr. Zern, you may have heard before, it was kind of a new approach to me. I won't take the time to read through it or get into it, but I would like to pass his email on to you in case you haven't seen it. And more than that, I would like to ask if we could respond to him, and if it is something that we either haven't considered or are working on, or even if we're not, that we give him a response and perhaps copy the rest of the council on this.
I already ported it on the staff.
If we could, I'd like to pass that on to Mr. Zern.
If you will do that.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, next, please.
At 5 is a consent item, and there will be one item that will be moved.
We'd like to take item 5C off calendar. That's the general manager of Glendale Water and Power, Director of Information Services regarding dispense with competitive bidding and authorized application, execution of agreement with the construction of a data center room at the Utility Operations Center. We'd like to take it off calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Stierman.
I'd also like to pull 5G and 5H. I have a speaker card.
5G and 5H were pulled, and the following routine may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed. And we do require the abstention of Councilmember Weaver on the minutes.
Just a very quick correction or addition to the minutes on item four. If on the second line, you could just add, it says "the plaza" and that although, you could add the demonstration between that, and it was a good concept. Just to be clear that...
On which part of the minute?
Item four.
Item four?
Right.
Okay.
I can show it to you.
Okay. All right.
I'll move the consent down with the remainder and abstain on the minutes.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
I would abstain on the minutes.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Could you read 5G and 5H?
5G is Director of Public Works Regarding Monterey Road New Traffic Signal Project, Spec. Number 3372, ESPL 5144047. At G1 is motion awarding contract to Christopher R. Morales, Inc. in the amount of $519,700 plus dollars, plus $51,970 in contingencies and rejecting all other bids. At G2 is a resolution appropriating $616,000.
Okay, I have one speaker card. William Hooper.
Honorable Mayor and council members, my name is William Hooper. As a professional engineer who lives and works in Glendale and as a bicyclist, I appreciate the ongoing and diligent efforts of the city's Public Works Department to provide a safe and efficient street network for all users. I wanted to express publicly my hope that the city, in constructing the traffic signals that are the subject of agenda items 5G and 5H, will be able to achieve full compliance with the state legislature's mandate in Vehicle Code Section 21450.5 to provide for the detection of bicycles and motorcycles at all new and reconstructed traffic-actuated signals. This requirement, for which Caltrans issued detailed implementation guidance in August, is an important way to make signalized intersections safer and more efficient for bicycle and motorcycle travel. I also want to acknowledge Kevin Carter of Public Works Engineering and Colin Bogart of the Safe and Healthy Streets Program for taking the time to discuss this issue with me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Zern, bicycles and motorcycles?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as with all of our street projects and signal projects over the last year, I'll say, we put a lot of consideration into pedestrian safety, bicycle enhancements, pedestrian enhancements, and detection. And we've been working on a number of systems that assist bikers in navigating through the intersections. We've tried some different type of head push buttons, but that turned out to be a little less safe for them. So we've been looking at these detection-type devices that will pick the bikes up, and those are things that we are including in our projects as we improve intersection. So absolutely, and the gentleman mentioned the two individuals who've been working diligently on this, Kevin Carter from our engineering division and certainly Colin Bogart, our driving force behind bicycle and pedestrian safety enhancements in the city. Absolutely, we're looking at those each and every time we go, and certainly any Caltrans regulations are incorporated into our new projects.
The other part of the equation was motorcycles.
Yes, sir. And I know that's dear to your heart, and we definitely...
That, obviously, this will also...
Yes. Again, Caltrans regulations that need to be installed, and these are all new signals. And quite frankly, we're very lucky. These are stimulus monies that we're able to begin to install some backlog of new signals, and I'm sure you've heard about over the term of your careers here where a lot of people have wanted new signals. We haven't had the CIP dollars. The stimulus money gives us that opportunity. So new signals will be state-of-the-art as far as all rules and regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Zern. Do I have a motion for 5G and H?
I'll move for 5G1 and H.
H has not been read into the record yet.
5G1.
Okay, roll call.
May I make a question? I remember these signals, Mr. Zern. We dealt with them at the PPC at least 10 years ago.
Yes.
So are you saying that we have a 10-year backlog on signal installation?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Najarian, yes, we do. And we have installed some over that time, but our new signal installation, CIP monies, are one of the areas that we had reduced as we balance our monies for road work and signal work. We relied a lot on grants, but that's why you'll see in our stimulus money expenditures, the great majority of it was pushed towards signal upgrades because that's an area that we've been, has been lower on the priority list over the last several years.
Thank you. Mr. Zern, what is the average cost for one signal installation?
It's closer to, an intersection is closer to about $200,000 these days. However, and you can see in our estimates, we realized some excellent bids, and a lot of that has to do with the current economic situation. But I will tell you, when I started in this business, you could signalize an intersection for $75,000 to $100,000, and that's probably more than double now, but...
I just want the public to understand why we put in more signals. They're not cheap.
No.
Okay. Move 5H1.
I can read 5H. Director of Public Works Regarding New Traffic Signal Installation at Various Locations Project, Spec. Number 3373, ESPL 5144050. H1 is a motion awarding the contract to Christopher R. Morales, Inc. in the amount of $549,900 plus $54,990 in contingencies, rejecting all other bids. At 2 is a resolution appropriating $649,890. And at 3 is a motion awarding professional services agreement to GK and Associates for the contract amount not to exceed $90,000 to provide traffic signal construction inspection services for the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, new traffic signal projects.
Is that card on? Welcome to Ketter. And I'll move 5H1, 2, and 3.
So you're moving 5G and 5H together?
Yes.
5G was acted on.
Yes.
Because we had read 5H.
5G was acted on.
There was no vote yet.
No vote.
And a second?
Oh.
Yes, there was. Okay. Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
All right, next.
Was there a vote on 5G?
There was. You took them together.
The vote was combined.
Yeah, I botched it up.
Took them together. At 6 would be oral communications.
All right, I'll start with Alfred Ramirez, followed by Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. I'm representing Adams Square. My name is Alfred Ramirez, and I'm the treasurer for Adams Square Merchants Association, and my day job is associate dean at the Garfield Campus of Glendale Community College. I'd like to present to you, if I can indulge a little bit of time, to show you what we're thankful for this Christmas season. We had a Christmas carnival, and we were lucky to have quite a few members of the community come forth, although the newspaper mentioned about 100. I think we had 100 in each line, as you'll see. We had a Ferris wheel come in, and we had over 490 gift bags to the kids as they came up to Santa to get their picture with Santa. So we estimated about 700 people stopped in, and we had about 195 kids show up at the library. You'll see some familiar faces of people that stopped by. Carol Sanfrini hopefully is watching this from her hospital bed. Unfortunately, she was hospitalized tonight, and we wish her well. I hope she is seeing this. We had face painting for the kids. They all enjoyed that. That line was full throughout the day. I'm not sure how she handled that. I mean, she did a great job for us. Kids had a bouncer. They were bouncing around for free. The lines in the Ferris wheel were fairly consistent. We had a little bit of crowd control at the end to get them out of there. As you can see, everyone had a great time. As soon as more folks heard about it, they started coming. We had police presence and dogs just in case we needed crowd control. Actually, they were just there for the fun of it. As you can see, the library was full. They had reading time for all the kids. And we had quite a good community presence come out and enjoy the holiday times. As I said, Santa came in as Harley. We're not fooling around. We bring in Santa at Adams Square. And thanks to Carol and John Sanfrini for setting all this up, and special thanks to Mr. John Drayman who stopped by and got his picture with Santa. So that was really good, and we really want to thank the city of Glendale and all the city council for their support this time and throughout all the years. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your hard work, Mr. Ramirez.
Thank you.
Mr. Drayman.
I just wanted to add my thanks to you all at Adams Square Merchants Association. It's one of those events that's really about community building, and just to confirm, there were more than hundreds there. The lines were amazing, the crowds were terrific, and everyone was enjoying themselves. So congratulations and good luck next year.
Mayor Quintero, members of the council, Mr. Starber and staff, I wonder if they would play that music again so I can make some closing comments on behalf of the friends and the friends at the library looking back at 2009. We look back at 2009, and we want to thank everybody who attended the fine authors events, the lectures, the book, people who came in, and we try to bring in the best lectures available, and we're going to do the same thing that's coming here. So we're really grateful for the turnout we've had at most of these events. And we're also thankful for the great response from the city as a whole to the One Book, One Glendale event. That turned out to be a great success at the library this past year. And there are other services that everybody should know about, but I'm going to mention first of all, anybody could get a library card by coming to the library and identifying yourself, and you get a free library card, and you can take out all the books from the world you want for no cost at all. Now, we also, for those who like to buy books, they find if you go to the bookstores nearby, they're a little high, we have a book nook run by the friends. And at this book nook, we have, you can't tell the difference some of the times whether the books are new or just used, but you can buy books for yourself, for your children. The average cost for the new book, almost new books, are $2, and we have children's books there as well. Now, we're proud, that is more the city than the friends, but the read program this past year was tremendous. I understand that some of the winners went to Dodger Stadium to be honored for their accomplishment in the reading of books, and that was a great program we had. And you can't forget the children's room. At the children's room, they have all sorts of activities, and from some of the service clubs, we get volunteers who come and read with the youngest children on Saturdays. So that's, children's programs is good, and anybody who has children, inquire. Come to the children's room. It'll be great for you, and it'll be great for your kids. And you can't forget the Brand Library. Elisa Resnick is the director. She doesn't get that much publicity here, but we have a Brand Library that's known, not just locally, but it's known throughout the state for its cultural programs, art, music, and other related public event matters. And so on behalf of Cindy Cleary, the director of the Glendale Library System, and Chuck Wyke, the director of community events who I work closely with, and myself, we'd like to thank everybody for their cooperation, for their interest in the library, and wish everybody the best in the holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next, please.
Mr. Mayor, at 7, under adoptions of ordinances, a 7A ordinance amending and adding certain provisions of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 establishing the Community Redevelopment and Housing Department and Community Services and Parks Department, and establishing a system of hearing officers in lieu of a zoning administrator for land use and other matters. This was offered on the meeting of December 8th, 2009, by Councilmember Weaver.
Mr. Starber. Do you have any cards?
Mr. Mayor, I see you have cards, and you had a report and a rather lengthy discussion on one component of this ordinance, which is the changes in the way we handle the zoning administrator functions. Let me ask for your indulgence for just a moment. I'd like Hassan Agani to emphasize a couple of points from last week's report. Hassan?
Yes, I think one of the questions that came up was what would be the main difference in terms of, and the consistency, how would we ensure the consistency in the proposed new process? The main difference between what we have today and what we're proposing is that instead of one person actually establishing and implementing the policies of the zoning code, we'd have a body, a group of individuals who would be doing that. And then to ensure consistency, we would have, at a minimum, every other month, a meeting by all of the hearing officers to make sure that we're reviewing and processing everything the same way. And if we see major variations between the way that different hearing officers are treating a policy implementation, we would then do two of the things. We would make them consistent, and we would direct the entire department to act consistently, or we might raise some questions for this code amendment that we would then bring to the city council for your consideration to actually specify. An example of that sort of change in code amendment would be similar to what we did on the 50% demolition rule, that we had a process in place that was not officially sanctioned by the code, and we managed to bring that to you, and you gave us very specific and clear directions in terms of, so that would be the consistency approach of it. And the main difference, again, is that the number of the individuals who would be hearing would expand the horizon and would allow us to have further discussion on some of the policy implications and the benefits of maybe specifying certain policy directions. I don't know if that answers that question further. Anything else, Mr. Starber, I should address?
I don't have any questions. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Garcia, do we, we discussed it last week at length, so this evening, do I reopen the public hearing or...
Mr. Mayor, last week's meeting was not a public hearing. It was on the agenda, a public meeting, and comments were taken, and the council discussed it and deliberated it, and then the ordinance was introduced. Under the Brown Act, because you had a prior meeting on the subject and there have been no changes, the council, at the mayor's discretion, could decide to just take action at this point, or what's also in your discretion is to take additional public comment. It's within your discretion at this point.
I'll take additional public comment for a limited amount of time. I'll take additional public comment for a limited amount of time. I'll start with Mary Ann Prelock, followed by Larry Barnes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Starburg and staff. I'm Mary Ann Prelock. I live at 1550 Royal Boulevard. I'm the secretary of Royal Canyon Property Owners Association and tonight I'm speaking for the association. We're members of the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council and our interests are usually represented by the council as a body, but this item on the agenda tonight was urgent for us and we couldn't wait for the next meeting of the coordinating council, so I'm here. Our board met last night and we discussed this proposal at length regarding establishing a panel of hearing officers to replace the single zoning administrator. I read the staff report today online to prepare for this meeting and I was surprised by the comment that some of the procedures in effect today were established in the 50s and are still being followed today. And it seemed to me that Glendale has changed dramatically in these last few years. And I think that the complex zoning and property issues that we face and have faced for many years require an updating and experienced staff to process and handle these matters. One reason this reorganization has a specific interest to Royal Canyon is the pending hearing regarding the Esmeralda Drive project. A hearing on this very important project was scheduled for December 23rd, which was quite a hardship for everybody that was interested. The interested parties asked for the date to be rescheduled and it's my understanding that only the applicant could ask for a reschedule. However, the zoning administrator...
If you could wrap it up, please, ma'am.
Is that five minutes?
I didn't give you five minutes. We've already discussed this last week, so I just wanted to get your views, your views on this particular topic.
May I finish, please?
Sure.
I would like to say that this final step in reorganization is very welcome to follow up the initial reorganization that has taken place. And I hope that the council will approve this change in the ordinance and implement it very soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Barnes, followed by Philip Keller.
Good evening. I'm Larry Barnes, president of the Chevy Chase Estates Association. I will be brief. I've emailed each of you over the weekend, an email that basically took a position of Chevy Chase Estates Association supporting this important revision to the ordinance. In support of the last speaker, it is long overdue. This is a journey on a long process that we believe, as an association, will add to the efficiency and the effectiveness, really, of city government in the way that it interacts to protect the interests of the people that you serve, the people. I would also say, just from a personal point of view and discussed amongst many of our board members, that this is a time where we have a divisive society, where a lot of special interests are represented. And therefore, there's been a distrust of government. And I think that this council is working very hard and I commend each and every one of you in your efforts to really bring the issues to the forefront and look to see what is right. So oftentimes, issues are discussed around special interests and I think this is an example of this is the right thing to do for the people of Glendale and we support it wholeheartedly. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Philip Keller?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members and city staff. My name is Philip Keller and I'm a board member of the Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association and I serve as its DRB representative and I'm here to speak for our association tonight. Very simply, we support the establishment of a hearing officer system to replace the zoning administrator's position as proposed in this ordinance amendment. We feel it is important to draw upon the broad experience available from the many veteran senior staff members in the planning department to better serve the community and we hope that you pass this through. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Then the final card is from Merna Stanley, who supports the ordinance and doesn't need to speak unless there's opposition. There's no... Right, and there's no opposition tonight, so. Okay, that's the...
Like motion, ma'am.
The comments, Mr. Weaver?
Move 7A.
Second.
Any comments? Mr. Najarian?
I have some comments, yes, I do. First off, are the hearing officers going to be a different job classification than currently exists?
No, actually, as it is, our job classifications for senior planners and principal planners include a sentence that says that may act as hearing officers as requested.
Will the individuals serving as hearing officers be entitled to any extra pay?
No, they would be under the same exact pay that they are today.
Would their role as hearing officers involve longer hours than they currently have in general?
Not necessarily. The hearing, these hearings take place usually on Wednesday mornings during business hours.
Are the hearing officers still going to remain independent?
Yes.
How can we, and in the answer to one of your questions, you talked about, should there be any inconsistencies in their decisions that you're going to have a meeting with them and straighten them out, so to speak? Don't you think that violates their independence?
That's not what I said, if I may. There will be, if there are inconsistencies, let's say that we have a series of standard variances that are heard by different, various, by various hearing officers and the decisions have been different with one another. Then in the meetings that we have, we will get into what prompted one hearing officer to decide one way and as opposed to another. And then we establish the policy for the department in terms of how, what policy would be most consistent with the interpretation of the code as it's written in the code so that all hearing officers will, from then on, continue hearing, making the decisions consistent with one another. In other words, the same findings that could be found by, for the same variance by two different officers, if they're very different and very divergent, that requires some discussion among the hearing officers and myself and perhaps some representative from the city attorney's office if the case becomes very, very divergent. That's what I meant by that, not that I'd show them what to do.
Again, I just want to say that I think our goal in revamping these departments, particularly the zoning administrator, should be to create consistency, certainty, and predictability in their decisions. There is so much that is not being said tonight. We're all dancing around the head of a pin and I think that's what is really leading to much of my, much of my resistance to this. And I think we're trying to fix a system by adding more parts to it. And I don't think that is economical, efficient, and I think in the end, we're going to run into a lot of different decisions by four individuals, intelligent, who understand the code all equally. And I think it's going to lead to larger problems down the road.
Mr. Starburg?
Mr. Mayor, if I can. An item not emphasized, but which has really been part of the entire reorganization effort in the community, the new community planning department, has been to also be able to look to the director, to be responsible for the implementation of your policy. In the same way that we now have the ability from the conceptual process of a development through to its post-construction maintenance, we now have under one department, one individual who ultimately you can hold responsible. Without saying that the director is the person who's going to hold the hearing, you have the same consistency now and responsibility of who to look to if we find that there are inconsistencies in zoning decisions that are taking place. Each officer gets to be independent relative to that particular hearing before them and making a determination, but you do need to hold some individual responsible for making sure that your policy, your direction is carried out in a consistent fashion. With the multiple hearing officer structure, with the director then being able to assign hearing officers and then work with them as a group to ensure that there's a consistent set of policies and guidelines that's being implemented, it continues the concept of community planning where you can look to the head of your planning department ultimately for the implementation of your policy, whether it's through the zoning determinations, the pre-conceptual land use entitlement process, or the post-development quality control that comes through Neighborhood Services. And this is all part and parcel of that philosophy of everything under one roof, in my view.
Mr. Najarian?
I thought the hearing officers were going to be randomly assigned to the cases and not, what you said is that there's going to be a case and Mr. Agani will assign the hearing officer. That's different than what I heard last week.
Well, I believe what we said was that I would assign the individuals who could act as hearing officers. The hearing officers would be randomly assigned to cases with one caveat, that we would make sure that the staff person who is preparing the staff report has not reported to that hearing officer and therefore there's, we eliminate any possibility of any kind of influence prior to the hearing or after the hearing because some person has supervised the case planner. That's the only way that we'll separate them. In terms of the randomness, the applicants will not know who the hearing officers are, but we will know ahead of time who the case planner is and we'll make sure that that person will not report to their own supervisor as a hearing officer.
Okay, let me just say that while we focused on zoning administrator and the hearing officers and so forth, what we have in front of us is what I've termed for eight-plus years, a more efficient delivery of city services. And that is what we are finally enacting tonight. A community redevelopment and housing department, all together under one roof, both metaphorically and physically, which helps communications between sections and departments. A community services and parks department, the community services will be dealing with more than just parks, with the CWG grant, homeless services, workforce development, grant administration, et cetera. And then finally, the community planning department, which, as Mr. Starburg mentioned, means that from the time you first get the idea, whether you're a homeowner, developer, or from the time you first get that idea and talk to your architect, you're going to go to one department. And hopefully, you'll be getting one answer all the way through till you get that final permit. And then, oh yes, then the follow-up to make sure that, for instance, planting that you may have done on a hillside and other types of issues like that are followed through. So I am very happy that we're finally going to enact this. We've been working on it for quite a while. The department's, department heads have done a wonderful job of getting everything organized and putting the staff together, so it's a great night for Glendale. Mr. Drayman?
Well, my comments are to Mr. Agani and your staff. I just wanted you to know that I am proud of you and your staff for proposing, presenting, and defending the logical and perfectly defensible, in my view, against some comments that have been made before the council that, in my view, are not particularly logical or defensible. I think it's important for all of us to remember that in the end, it's this council, this change will be implemented or not by vote of this council and, in my opinion, this is the right thing to do. People in the city have been talking about this issue for a long time. It was a subject of conversation when I ran for office in 2005 and it was a subject of conversation when I ran for office in 2007. I also want to point out a couple, one other thing about this term we keep hearing about autonomy. We've heard that autonomy of the zoning administrator's position, and it's interesting that this concept of autonomy somehow, and to some necessarily, equates to appropriate or fair or even adequate administration. But sometimes I have to ask myself over the years whether the current process is better for our city's residents. What if this autonomy allows for inappropriate rulings without a counterbalance, which place the city and its residents in jeopardy of expensive or damaging litigation or irreparably damaged the quality of life in our city in the process? And I can't help but think that in the study of human nature and world history, that that history is replete with examples of how completely autonomous leadership, if you will, can achieve a certain kind of tyranny at times. And I don't mean to imply that our ZA or any other ZA that would be in the current process is a tyrant. I don't believe that. But I do believe that our current process in the city has let us down what many in the city believe is a decidedly inappropriate path, which compromises our quality of life and endangers property values and has engendered little confidence in the process that we all deal with. And so for these reasons, I plan to support this change.
Else?
Weaver? I'd move 7A.
Second.
There was already a motion and a second. Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Ms. Friedman?
I would like to ask if there's any consensus to agendize an amendment to the ordinance that we just passed. And the reason that I'm bringing this up now is because I felt that it was extremely important to get this ordinance passed. It's a very good ordinance and I didn't want to confuse the issue by discussing any options. But I do have a suggestion for a revision to the ordinance, which would be to allow, at the planning director's discretion, some of the more controversial cases to be heard by the planning commission, incented by an internal planner. And the reason is because sometimes the planning department has a very good sense of which cases are going to be appealed. And I believe that for expediency and for a chance for more public input and for a chance for a controversial project to be heard, not by a staffer, but by a group of citizens from the planning commission, that certain select cases would benefit from going directly to the planning commission instead of having to go through a multi-stage process. So if anybody concurs, I would like to have this agendized to a date certain.
Is there anyone concurring, Mr.?
Well, I'm not sure if I concur or not. I'd like to hear more about it and I'm perfectly willing to be...
Concur in wanting to put it on the agenda?
Yes, I would concur in wanting to hear more discussion, so I would agree to...
On the agenda. All right, next, please.
7B is an ordinance amending Title 16 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to subdivisions and lot line adjustments. This was also offered on December 8th, 2009 by Councilmember Weaver.
Does Mr. Mayor?
I don't have any...
Then I'll move 7B.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments?
Councilmember Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Action items at 8A is city manager regarding consideration of awarding a bid for federal legislative advocacy services. At 8A is a motion providing direction of staff regarding the award of a bid for federal legislative advocacy services for fiscal year 0910. At 2 is a resolution appropriating $78,000 for awarding the federal legislative advocacy contract to the firm of David Church and Associates. At 3 is a resolution appropriating $124,200 for awarding the federal legislative advocacy contract to the firm of the Ferguson Group.
Mr. Starburg?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll go to Yasmin. Yasmin Behir is deputy city manager for the staff for just feels like years.
Yes, it does. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, at the June 30th, 2009 city council meeting, city council directed staff to solicit proposals from qualified firms for a federal... Council directed staff to solicit proposals from qualified firms for federal legislative advocacy services. There were four firms that actually submitted proposals to the city of Glendale. All four firms did participate in an interview panel. The interview panel consisted of Steve Zern, Director of Public Works, George Chapchan, Director of Parks and Creation and Community Services, Glenn Steiger, General Manager of G W P, Jay Kreitz, who is the safety administrator, public safety administrator for the police, and myself. The interview panel concluded that David Church and Associates and the Ferguson Group both have the technical ability as well as the staff resources to achieve the city's goals as it relates to federal lobbying efforts. David Church and Associates has proposed an annual retainer of $78,000. The Ferguson Group has proposed an annual retainer fee of $124,200 for the period of January 1, 2010, through December 31, 2010. It is important to note that the Ferguson Group did provide us with a memorandum on Friday stating that they're willing to negotiate a reduced retainer fee that may work for the city of Glendale, and I have provided you with that memorandum. Since that information was received by city staff from the Ferguson Group, the disparity of cost is no longer an issue, and should the City Council direct staff to negotiate with the Ferguson Group, we would do so. At this time, staff request that the City Council provide direction regarding the award of the bid for the city's federal legislative advocacy services for January 1 through December 31 of 2010. I do want to say that we plan to come back to the City Council to get an understanding of the City Council's priorities for their legislative platform, as well as priorities that you may have for actual projects prior to submitting any appropriations requests to our federal lobbyists. Also, both firms are here this evening. The Ferguson Group, we have Mike Miller here, as well as Charmaine Mccone, and we have David Church here as well, if you have any questions of either of the firms.
Mr. Drayman?
Well, I have comments, and I've made some notes, but if, Mr. Mayor, if you're going to hear from the firms, I'd rather wait until they've had a chance to speak or not. Frankly, I'll get your direction, whatever.
No, I assume everyone's read the report, so let's have some comments first, and if we have questions, we can.
Well, as you know, Mr. Mayor, my concern over the contract between the city and a federal legislative advocacy service, that is to say, for those listening in, that's a fancy term for a federal lobbyist firm, stems from a desire to make sure that the expenditure of funds for such a service, to the extent that such services are believed to be of benefit to the city, are spent wisely and that our lobbyist is responsive to the priorities of the City Council and represents this city effectively and favorably with our elected counterparts in Washington, D.C. The point here is not to disparage the current lobbyist, but to make sure that the policies and views of this council, which is of a completely different composition in terms of personnel from the council which first hired Church and Associates six years ago and his firm, I think only two members of this council were around then. And as I understand it, prior to that, we didn't have a legislative advocate in Washington. We sort of did this on our own. Toward that end, I requested and received support from the majority of the council, City Council, to look at other options, considering the new policy direction coming from the dais, as well as the new composition of the federal government and the status of our federal budget and the economy. The staff was instructed to put out an R F Q, a request for qualifications. The idea at the time was to cast a wide net of potential lobbyist firms by identifying those cities in Los Angeles and Orange Counties, which are most similar to Glendale in terms of population, demographic, economic status, policy vision, and interests, to contact the legislative advocacy organizations, including Mr. Church, which represent those cities, and to bring them to the table for this council to consider. Instead, it seems that the city conducted an R F P, a request for proposals, rather than the R F Q that was requested. So I guess you could say that we didn't mind our Ps and Qs, but in any case, the end result is it would appear, in my opinion, that we, to some extent, limited the pool of potential applicants rather than expanding the pool. The two successful applicants, Church and Associates and the Ferguson Group, both firms longstanding in this field, submitted applications rather than, take my colleague's time on how this process may have gone awry, I will simply focus instead on the comparison of the two firms as I see it. I begin with some questions asked of Mr. Church from the dais last time. As background, the staff report once again asserts that the city of Glendale received $5.8 million in federal funds over the last six years. Putting aside the fact that for a city the size of Glendale, the third-largest city in Los Angeles County, it certainly appears to me that less than $1 million per year on average is not exactly a figure to write home about, according to a number of firms I have spoken with. But really, the point is that the staff report seems to imply that all or many or most of these funds accrued to Glendale is a result of our lobbyists' work. Yet, no facts or figures or documentation is contained in the report to bear this notion out. When I asked Mr. Church to compare this number, giving him the benefit of the doubt, with other client cities with which he works, in other words, how do our federal dollars stack up with the federal dollars accrued to cities, other client cities with which he works and represents, his answer was simply, "I don't know." When I mentioned the regional DNA lab, which the staff report credits to Mr. Church rather than Congressman Adam Schiff, who was clearly the engine in Washington that made this happen, both staff and Mr. Church were largely silent. The fact is that Congressman Adam Schiff advocated on behalf of this for his district, and he didn't need a federal lobbyist to do this. In a private meeting with Mr. Church, in fact, the one and only meeting I have had with him or his representative since taking office two and a half years ago, he mentioned that he had little to do with the DNA lab. You may recall that I persisted in asking why our staff report speaks to Mr. Church organizing and orchestrating annual trips to Washington to meet with our elected counterparts there, and goes on to reference such a meeting in April of 2009. You'll recall that I asked about that several times. What the report fails to mention is that no elected official of this city was included, not the mayor, me at the time, not the redevelopment chair, Mr. Najarian, not Councilmembers Quintero, Weaver, or Usafian. In response to my inquiry about this, it was revealed that the delegation representing the city at the time was comprised of Captain Ray Eadie of the Glendale Police Department, Glenn Steiger, the General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, Steve Zern, Director of Public Works, and John Tucktallion from our management services offices. This is all well and good, and I thank them for their service. However, it was also pointed out that Mr. Schiff and staff members of Senators Barbara Boxer and Diane Feinstein inquired as to the reason that no elected officials from Glendale were present. I raise this issue not to complain that neither me nor my colleagues were included, but because it leads me to the heart of my decision to advocate that the City Council grant a contract to the Ferguson Group at Item 8A1 and 3. In our R F P, the city lays out the scope of work expected by a lobbying firm, which might hire and therein describes the responsibilities that we expect from our lobbyists, and they include, let me read it, Item 3 on that page, that's Page 5 of the R F P, by the way, under Section D, Subsection 2, Responsibilities. It says, "Assist in establishing relations between council members and legislative persons, including chairs of key committees and other decision-makers." Contrary to assisting in establishing such relationships, I have never heard a word or a contact from our current Legislative Advocacy Association to establish contact relations or with our legislative counterparts in Washington. In fact, I just recounted my experience to the absolute contrary of that. I want to move on to Items 4 and 5, under the responsibilities, to meet with city staff and city council to assist in the development of the city's list of goals, priorities, and specific projects, and Number 5, to identify which goals, priorities, and projects could be addressed at the federal level and assist in developing written material on each request to provide to congressional staff. Mr. Church has been our lobbyist for six years. In the last two and a half years that I've been here anyway, I have never been contacted by Mr. Church or any of his associates for this purpose, or for so much as meeting with the exception of one private meeting, when it appeared that his contract might not be renewed. And then we did have a private meeting, I was contacted. I think it would be instructive also to inquire of the rest of the council to see what their experience is with this, Mr. Weaver, Ms. Friedman, Mr. Najarian, and also Mr. Mayor Quintero. As far as assisting with prioritizing our city's goals vis-à-vis his firms lobbying on our behalf, on the last occasion, Mr. Church arrived, and this council was caught flat-footed when it realized that with zero input or contact from Mr. Church, that is, from our end, perhaps with staff, but not with us, we were expected to hand over a list of such priorities that night at that meeting. And of course, what we ended up doing was selecting the same priorities that we have year in and year out. And let me move on to Item Number 7. Monitor and provide reports, both orally and in writing, on current federal legislation, federal budget process, or any legislative events that may directly or indirectly impact the city. I have not received one communication from the Church firm on any such topic, except yesterday, in the form of an email, which I'm sure all of you received, to lobby for his renewed contract. On these four out of 10 responsibilities, which we laid out in the selection process, which we have stated are key in our R F P, in my view, our current firm has not received a passing grade. I understand, though, that he tells us he will now do better. Mr. Church reports for the year 2008 that he charged his client cities, and it's a matter of public record, in 2008, basically either $40,000 or $80,000, depending on the city, per year, never more, and apparently nevertheless. There would appear to be only these two levels of service, apparently, connected with the service fee. This does not exactly inspire confidence in me that Mr. Church has a tailored plan for the city of Glendale. In fact, we are told and encouraged not to ask for legislative advocacy on such items as social services, environmental topics, parkland creation, arts and culture, or library requests. We are continually told to stick to homeland security issues, water and power issues, transportation issues, and road and sewer maintenance issues, because those are the ones that are the winning topics, and these others are sort of non-starters. But are they? Or are they simply the areas in which our current firm is most familiar? I believe we need a new direction and a new partner. I've come to that conclusion. I didn't start there, but that's where I've ended up. I find it much more to my liking to select an advocacy firm which ties, with ties to legislators in other states as well and other regions, whose votes for allocation of federal dollars, we must rely. With the exception of Wilmer, St. Cloud, and Bemidji, Minnesota, the Church firm's list appears connected fairly exclusively to California cities and Southern California cities primarily at that. Finally, I find it just simply amazing that a firm which represents almost exclusively cities with greater dissimilarities to Glendale than similarity, a firm which represents almost exclusively cities with no urban component, no comparable population, demographic or retail component, a firm which represents mostly cities with agricultural backgrounds and in some cases have more sheep and goats than people living in them, is somehow supposed to be better at understanding and representing Glendale's interests than a firm that represents cities like Santa Monica, San Ana, Irvine, and Arcadia. Mayor, you indicated that you wanted to see what else was out there. I agree with that notion, and that's why I am supporting the Ferguson Group. And I think that is the direction we should go.
Okay, any other comments?
Well, that's how you really feel.
I wanted to be on the record, colleague.
I just, I met with representatives from both firms, and I will add that the Ferguson firm is not a partisan firm. They have as many Republican as Democrat lobbyists. So this is not about Democrats versus Republicans at all in my mind. It's about more of the issues that my colleague pointed out. I just wanted to make that very clear to the listening public.
Okay, Mr. Weaver?
Well, I guess, Mr. Najarian was, you were here when we created, hired the first lobbyist, federal lobbyist?
I don't think I was.
Okay, then I was. Oh, Frank, okay. Here, you know, we set up the process and how we would do all this and how we would get the information to Mr. Church and how we would interact with him. And it wasn't for council members, per se, to interact with Mr. Church, it was staffers to act after we determined here what our priorities were. And we did in slight variations over the years, as I recall, what we want, and then Mr. Church, who's been in Washington, I don't know, many years, would make the legislative contacts, either with staffers of people like Mr. Schiff or others, and then he would set up meetings. And the first ones, I think, the mayor didn't go at first, and then the mayor started going to Washington every time with other staff members. And Mr. Church and his staff as lobbyists would set up the meetings with Mr. Schiff or whoever, Congressman Schiff, to discuss the issues. A lot of times, it's having a pulse of what is going to make it through on the federal budget level, where it is. You want railroad cars, what do you want, what's the priority? And he would tailor it to that means. I've met with Mr. Church and his staff on his different visits to Washington. I think his staffers even more than Mr. Church. But it was always open, always told us what was going on. I haven't called him to find out and to lobby. We've given directions to staff on what we wanted, where our priorities were. Now, if the process that we have set up isn't working for this particular council, well, then it's our job as a council to give the staff the way they want us to deal with our lobbyists. That hasn't happened at this time. I'm not comparing other cities. I think there's a lot of variables trying to determine which one serves, which one the best, whatever. I believe both firms probably have been in Washington for decades, probably. Both know what they're doing. I dealt with Washington for almost a decade when I was with the Army Corps of Engineers, and as doing the federal budget, I had to be talking to Washington, D.C. I learned a little of the ropes of what goes on there. I know the Ferguson Group was in City Hall today trying to meet with me, and I figured it wasn't right to be meeting with one group on the day we're hearing. And sitting here tonight, I get the letter that was sent on December 11, which concerns me a little. And in there, in this email, says, "The proposed retainer fee included in our proposal was determined based upon an informal yet general notion of what the actual scope of work was." Well, why would you put together a proposal on the general notion and the discrepancy of $50,000 in the report? You know, that doesn't track. If I was putting a proposal together to get one of these cities, I would have found out much more detail on what they expected, at least the procedure that we've used to date. So I can't see doing that, you know, and if we throw this out or say something, it just doesn't seem, doesn't seem right. Ferguson's willing to sit down and negotiate. Ferguson's willing to sit down and negotiate a new scope of work in retainer after they know all this. Kind of reminds me of an issue we had here a few months ago regarding parking concepts and modern parking. We reversed ourselves and I went back with the majority of council doing it. Here we have two numbers on the table, $50,000 difference. That's quite a bit. I've yet to find an indication that Church and Associates has not done a good job for the city. Maybe it's the categories of where we're trying to get the money. The Congress of the United States is off in one direction, or some item that we want is not included in some appropriations bill, he's not going to get us the money that year. I know we've been big on ISIS, we've been vague on rail, and what if there's, I forget the terms we use for it now, but there's different appropriations bills that are coming through, supplemental bills. And if the money isn't there, we're not going to get an earmark to come here. So the bottom line for me, $50,000 difference, and I've never heard, myself, I've never heard any complaint from anyone, except from Mr. Raymond, that Church and Associates, Associates was not doing a very decent job force. So I have no reason to all of a sudden tell them to take a hike after we developed a good relationship and bring in a new firm for $50,000 more, not knowing what they will be able to do. There was justification on the table for it, that's one thing, but I say it's not fair. So I support Church and Associates to continue the work for that substantially lower price.
Mr. Najarian, was there a staff recommendation, Ms. Pierce, as to which lobbying firm we should go with?
From the interviews that we had and the panels, discussions, we had a ranking order as the staff report indicates. Church was first in that rank, and Ferguson was second, but in terms of the staff making a recommendation to you this evening, based on the new information received from the Ferguson Group, cost had a huge factor in the deciding factor initially of where the staff wanted to go. So it's really up to council to let us know. I mean, it's, the departments that met with Church and Associates are our large operational departments that work with our federal lobbyists on an ongoing basis. And for them to have the experience that they've had with the current firm that we've had on since 2003, that past practice speaks for itself, and, and the staff has had good experiences working with Jamie Jones, who is the person who's assigned to this contract. That is not to say that we cannot build relationships with a new firm. We've brought forward two firms to you this evening and would like to receive some feedback from you in terms of what your thoughts are. And if you do choose for us to go and negotiate a new contract price, a retainer fee with the Ferguson Group, we'd be happy to do that as well.
You said that as a result of this memo, that disparity in cost is no longer an issue?
Could possibly be not an issue if we go back and negotiate with the Ferguson Group.
Are they ready to do this for the same price? This is kind of what the parking people did. We'll, we'll match that price. So is Ferguson ready to match the 80,000 or the 78,000 that Church?
We haven't had that discussion, Mr. Najarian.
Do the same work.
Okay.
We haven't had that discussion. We haven't negotiated, but they are here this evening, and, and if you'd like to ask them questions, I'd be, I'm sure, happy to answer some of your questions.
I mean, the same concerns I had with the parking contract, but we were negotiating on the fly, I think I would, would hold true for, for this, for this contract. Some of the criteria that were listed in the RFP, well, the criteria that were listed in the RFP, those are not the identical duties that we've requested and have assigned contract for with the Church firm, are they?
The scope of work that is listed in the staff report and was listed in the request for proposal is not identical, no, to the contract that we have currently or had until November 30th, I should say, of, of this year with David Church and Associates. There are some differences, yes.
Is it the job of our lobbyist, whoever that may be, to get the councilman or council people or mayor to buy an airline ticket and book reservations and coordinate with staff to come to Washington? Is that something we count on them for, or is that something we count on staff to assist us with?
That's something that staff does in terms of scheduling.
But, Mr. Mayor, if I can add to that, if you don't mind. The role of elected officials and the importance of them being present in Washington, I will tell you, the staff has learned through the multiple trips they've been on, it's very important. Same in Sacramento. Staff can deliver a message, but elected representatives recognize their counterparts to local level as frankly, having more bars and stripes and being closer to the issues for their community. And I think part of a lobbyist, whether state level or federal level, is helping us and the council to understand how we can be effective in, in lobbying for Glendale's interests. And a part of that is, you know, coming to you and helping you to understand why it's important for you to have representatives at those meetings. We should do it. Frankly, the lobbyists should help us to be effective in that regard as well.
Let me ask you a question then. Given that, don't you think it would have been maybe appropriate for Mr. Church's firm to, for instance, call and introduce himself to me when I was elected, or at least at some point during my term in office before the last few weeks, when this has all become an issue? I didn't even know we had a federal lobbyist until the idea of a contract renewal came up, and if we're supposed to be important and, and have helped them, and if we're supposed to be working with them to set priorities and goals, I would have thought that they would have made it a point to actually contact me.
I'm not through speaking, so after you, you guys go, I mean, I extended a courtesy for a question.
Oh, you lost, you lost us.
This happened last week too, so.
All right, well, Mr. Najarian takes a break. I'm sure he'll be back. Let me start by saying that, has it been six years that we've had this lobbyist, right?
2003.
Yeah. I voted against hiring a federal lobbyist. My experience with our local congressman, Congressman Schiff, is that he is, he personally is more than accessible in terms of responding to phone calls, and his staff is also, also acts the same way. And then our two senators, Feinstein and Boxer, the same way. While they don't respond personally, certainly their staffs have been, have been great to work with throughout the years. So initially, I didn't think that we particularly needed to spend the money. But at the end of six years, I don't think that this company has really done a whole lot for us. As recently as, I guess it was Friday, Friday, I got a call from Congressman Schiff, and he let me know, and I should have acknowledged this at the staff comments, he let me know that the DNA lab had received 500,000, and our ISIS project had also received 500,000. And so my interaction with this company has been zero. I sit on other groups that we, from time to time, generally, I guess quarterly at a bare minimum, during the legislative sessions, much more so, we actually receive printed materials talking about different bills and what's going on with proposals that we've sent in or asked for. And once again, I mean, if it's being done, it's not transmitted to the elected officials. But I've received zero communications from, from this firm as to what is or isn't being done in the, in the Congress. So I'm, I'm ready to move on and, and find another firm, and hopefully they're going to communicate better with the elected officials. And we need to absolutely overhaul this entire process, because at this point, I don't think that the city council has generally known what, what's been going on with our lobbying efforts. So I think it needs a little higher profile. Then in terms of the process, I was a little bit surprised, because I do remember specifically for the state lobbyists, when we hired a state lobbyist, that the companies and individuals who applied were right there at the podium. And so we had the written reports and their concepts in printed form, but we also had a chance to interview them and ask pointed questions about what it is exactly that they were going to do for us and how they were going to go about doing it, and we could really gauge a little bit in terms of their overall presentation skills, the same skills that they'll be using in front of the legislature. So this process for me was a bit flawed in the sense that we never really got an opportunity to, to talk to the different firms who submitted proposals. But at any rate, after reading the report, I do think that the Ferguson Group is a, a better match for us in terms of the cities that they represent and the overall presentation that they've made in their RFP.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Weaver.
I ask my colleagues, who's our state lobbyist?
Counselor.
And when's the last time any of you met with him?
Get emails from them all constantly.
I don't.
They never call me?
They call me.
I get emails.
And?
Or emails.
Raymond, do they, have you met him since you got elected?
No, and I, if you wanted to review them, I'm fine with that too.
No, I, I'm just saying, I'm hearing things that don't track. You're saying things about the federal lobbyists, but state lobbyists, the townsmen are good. I know them just as well as I do. And, and I was opposed to putting towns in it at the time. But I was overruled, came in, I've met with them different times, but not in the last 12 months or more. So does that mean they're not doing the job? I don't think so.
Mr. Starbird?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think the takeaway message for your staff from this discussion is we need, I hear the council wanting to be engaged with your lobbyists. We need to make a stronger effort to make sure that's connected, there's that connection between you and the lobbyist and your engagement throughout the process. I think a lot of their communications do go through staff, and we give you updates here and there, but that doesn't really give you a sense of what they're doing and who they are. I mean, their jobs are all about developing relationships, and the criticisms you've expressed here this evening is one that I think we need to take to heart, and your representatives need to take to heart, because that relationship with you is also important. You have to have confidence in them. They need to know you and be able to represent your interests effectively, whether it's Sacramento or Washington. And I hear a strong interest in wanting to be engaged in that, and we need to do a better job of making sure there is that consistent engagement and dialogue between you, the lobbyists, our representatives at, at both levels. I think they can be more effective. I've yet to see a lobbyist that doesn't welcome that sort of thing. And in large part, it's up to your staff to make sure that we're constantly reminding you, our lobbyists, and ourselves that we need to have that, that connection, regardless of who you use.
Ms. Najarian?
Okay, as I was saying, let me, let me address the issue of the DNA lab that has come up, and Mr. Church, either in public took credit, in private disavowed. I was at that meeting where council had sent myself, and I don't think Mr. Yusefian was there at that time, but on, with marching orders to Washington to discuss our legislative advocacy program and priorities. And it was in a meeting where we were talking about, I don't know, we were, I think we were trying to sell swimming pools to Adam Schiff, that wasn't going anywhere, that he, that he looked on our list and said, "Oh, how about number 18, your regional DNA lab?" "Yeah, oh yeah, okay, 18, the DNA lab." And it was at that moment that I was handed a, I want to call it a crib sheet by Mr. Jamie Jones, which more or less summarized our position. This wasn't something he came up with, but he had it handy. He gave it to me, and without missing a beat, I was able to make a few cogent remarks on, on why it's important. Obviously, Representative Schiff, Congressman Schiff is the one who cast the vote for that DNA lab. Mr. Church and his associates weren't there on the floor pulling the lever, nor was I. But I would like to think that, that that small discussion and that expression of interest in the DNA lab and furthering funding for that played some small role in us getting this DNA lab, and it's certainly now, from the latest news, is coming to fruition to be something that, that's quite proud of. I have been to Washington many, many times. I have probably been to Washington more than any of my colleagues in the past four or five years to, to lobby and to advocate on a variety of levels. I've been there advocating for the MTA. I've been there advocating for the high-speed rail. I've been there with, with MetroLink. I have met and discussed and dealt with lobbyists from big cities and big entities like the city of Los Angeles, like Orange County, like the county of Los Angeles. The high-speed rail people, believe me, with their eight, nine billion dollar bond that's passed, they are geared up and they are ready to go. I have, in comparison to the service that I have received as a elected official, from the minute I land in Washington, to a briefing on the issues, to an explanation of the myriad of procedures and processes through legislative committees and appropriations committees, I haven't been let down once by Mr. Church and his associates. And it's not just the standard Adam Schiff and Senator Boxer and Senator Feinstein. We get in to see Grace Napolitano, Lucille Royball Allard, Diane Watson, Jane Harmon. And I've, I've seen other lobbyists at work, I've been in other lobbyists' meetings and accompanied them. I don't have, and I wouldn't say this because I have no ties to Mr. Church, but I'm completely and utterly satisfied with the service that he gives, his knowledge of the individual quirks of any particular member of Congress, which is half the game. You might go in and talk 45 minutes with Jim Obersthar about bicycling and just talk about your transportation issues for one or two minutes, but it's that 45 minutes that he remembers, and the one minute that you talk transportation sinks in. I'm, I'm not happy, it appears to be, that we're, we're moving away from David Church. I don't really see any solid reasons for that. I don't know the Ferguson firm. I've not heard anything bad about them, but so much of lobbying is personal relationships, personal contacts, and it would be a shame, I think, for the city to lose the services of David Church. Now, if my colleagues would entertain, and this is something we did at the MTA where we were in a similar impasse, the, the notion came up to blend the services of two lobbying groups, to use David Church and Associates for perhaps his strong points, which is transportation and infrastructure, as well as community policing, the cops, cops and police and fire, and turn over to the Ferguson Group some of our other interests that we've, we've all discussed and made known, arts, social services, parks, and other things. I think that may be a nice blend, a best-of-both-worlds type of thing, but I certainly would hate to lose, to lose the services of David Church and Associates.
I have a question. I appreciate your perspective because you've been there working with these firms, and that means something to me. I just, so that I understand and I have the right vision in my head of what you're saying. When you were there working with the Church Company, was it for city of Glendale or MTA? Because you were talking about how you were there for MTA and you were there for high-speed rail. So were you working with them on those issues, or you're working with them on, or is this a different time when you were there for a Glendale issue, where you were combining trips?
No, I, my involvement with Church has been probably, about five of my trips have been exclusively city of Glendale, and that includes ISIS, our communications group that we're, we're a part of. Once, I think I was involved with MetroLink business with him. MTA is a panel of lobbying firms, it's not just one. And there was something to be said for having more than one person working for you up there. Every firm has its own connections and its own inroads to certain members of Congress in, in the different houses. in, in the different houses. High-speed rail was a completely different group. The City of LA and the County of LA send some of their lobbyists along as the interests of MTA and transportation for the county coincide with their, with their efforts as well. So almost exclusively City, once with MetroLink, and some ISIS sprinkled in there as well.
Okay, any other, Mr. Freeman?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out something, just for a little bit, just for clarity. And Councilmember Najarian raises some very good issues, and, but I just wanted to make it clear that his concern with regard to whether or not the Church Firm or any other firm, lobbying firm, contacts us as individually elected representatives and to coordinate us going there or not, whether it's our responsibility to buy a ticket or not. It's not me saying that. It's the city saying that in our RFP. It's not only that, it's the staff saying that in our staff report, that that is part of, part of what he did, but he didn't in some cases. And I, you know, Ms. Beers knows that I did not see the original RFP. I didn't request it because to me, part of what the staff was saying when they selected David Church at that point was that we're basing part of this on past practice. So past practice tells me that what's in the RFP is not his past practice. I also note some things in the RFP, such as little things that I think are indicators, questions such as, do you train your new employees? And the answer is, no, we only hire experienced staff people. And then when it asks, well, after they've been hired, after a certain amount of time, do you have ongoing training? And the answer is, we have meetings and seminars. To me, that's a, how do I say it? I want to boil this down into something concise. I, I want a lobbyist that's gonna go to Washington DC and do the lobbying there, not here. And that's part of my concern. And lastly, the, of course, it's our, our lobbyist's responsibility in part to contact us, to make sure that we're, that we're hearing from them and that they're hearing from us. Of course it is. And those, those are my views on it, so.
I just wanted to respond to Mr. Weaver's comments about the money part of this. And absolutely, I understand that money's always an issue. But to me, this is not the kind of situation where you're putting an RFP out for someone who's gonna build a building, and at the end of the day, you're gonna get the same building, whichever firm you hire, so you're just gonna hire the firm that's the cheapest. I think that this decision goes beyond that into the firm that's gonna best represent the city. Because the idea here is that we're hiring someone to go out and bring us money and to lobby for our issues in Washington. And in some ways, the cost of that, you know, becomes the less, least important part of that equation. If you feel that you're going to get more of a return if you spend more on a firm, that's something you should take into account. And I'm not suggesting that's the case here. I believe that when Ferguson came back with their memo, they weren't saying, oh, we've decided to lower our rates. What their memo actually says is, we gave you this price based on the amount of time we thought we should spend on your city, but we're willing to, you know, take another look at the scope of work that you're expecting. And I don't, I wonder if it's not a bad idea to allow these, these two firms to come up at this point and maybe to respond to some of what we've been talking about so that we can hear their responses and so that the public can have an idea of what we're looking at. So does anyone have any interest in that?
I think our minds are all made up, from what I'm hearing. By the way, I think Mr. Church is located in Washington DC, not here. He lobbies for us there.
Okay, well.
One of the requirements, Mr. Mayor, is that whatever the firm is, has offices in Washington DC, so they vote.
I make a motion?
Yes. I move 8A1 and 2.
2. It's a motion and a resolution. Second.
You're good, Mr. Weaver.
Hold on, let me, where's 8A1 and 2?
Oh, just vote for it.
No. Ready?
Mr. Mayor?
Just for the record, on 8A1, you're talking about appointing David Church and Associates?
Yes.
Along with, okay. Because the motion has voted for him.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I was just going to ask for a clarification from the city attorney, but he beat me to it, so.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers, Freeman?
No.
Friedman?
No.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
No. Could I have a motion? Mr. Freeman?
I will move item, items 8A, this would be 1 and 3?
1 and 3.
Or 3.
It would be sort of an amended 3, wouldn't it?
It would be. With, with the amendment, with, with language amending the resolution at 3 to meet with the Ferguson Group to discuss issues of the...
Suggest scope, scope, scope of, scope of services and the appropriate fee.
Would that be coming back to us again?
Can you?
So you can negotiate any price for any scope of work without coming back to us?
If I may suggest to give us a range, not to exceed, that would allow us to negotiate with the Ferguson Group and not have to come back to the city council of $75,000 to an X-dollar amount, so that we can start this process come January 1st with the new appropriations process and our federal lobbyists, since we are gonna be dark the next couple of weeks.
Let me suggest, this will involve a bit of negotiations here, and I hate to have the outside number there. If, if your motion retains their firm, I would imagine principals are in the audience, they can speak for themselves, that they'd likely be willing to begin working on our project in January while we, this month, and time between now and then, pin down the, the precise number as well as any amendments to the contract. I doubt there'll be much in the way of changes to the contract. It'll, it'll probably be more refining the, the costs and some of the details, but my guess is that doesn't, once you've approved the contract, that wouldn't need necessarily hold up, making sure that we're working on our January appropriations request. My guess is they'd be supportive of that.
Okay, well, Mr. Miller, would you address that point? And your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Mike Miller. I'm a partner with the Ferguson Group. And just briefly, yes, we would agree to, the terms as outlined in the proposed amendment.
Okay, thank you.
And I would amend my motion accordingly.
I want to say, is I want to see that lobbyist in my office at least once a quarter, if not once a month. We can change things, then change them. I want to see him in there, and I want to have my input on what he's doing in Washington. He or she is doing Washington.
Give me a second. We need a second for the motion.
Second.
Are there any other comments?
In terms of just bookkeeping, and I apologize for process here, if council is willing to appropriate the higher number, the 124, 200, then we would be able to go back and do the negotiations that we need to do with the Ferguson Group in terms of our financial needs, so that we don't have to come back to council for an actual appropriation, if council is comfortable with that.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, we're kind of thinking on the fly here, but I, I guess I anticipated we would bring you back a finalized contract.
Oh, you do, okay.
Very quickly after the first of the year, and I didn't see the need for you to act on that, holding up our, working with their firm on the January appropriation. We do the appropriation at the same time.
Mr. Mayor, that would be my preference as the maker of the motion, frankly.
All right, and a second agrees.
Yep, that's fine.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Freeman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
All right, next, please.
AP is Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services Regarding Arts and Culture and Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission's Recommendation Regarding Proposal For Rakmoninov Junior Piano Competition To Be Held At The City Of Glendale In 2010. AP wants a motion providing direction to staff.
Mr. Starbird?
Yes, let me go to George Chapchan, Director of Community Services and Parks. It'll take a while. It'll take a while. Glad you remembered my name, though.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero. Thank you, Mr. Starbird, members of the city council. The Chief Executive Officer of International Competitions and Festivals, or ICF, Mr. Armand Tertavosian is proposing to bring a Rakmoninov International Junior Piano Competition to Glendale to be held at the Alex Theater in, in fall of 2010. The proposed event is a piano competition with participants under the age of 18. The event would be similar to the Rakmoninov International Piano Competition held in Pasadena back in 2002, of which the promoter did. Since the 2002 event, this promoter has held two similar competitions, one in 2005 and one in 2008 at the Disney, Walt Disney Concert Hall. In September 2009, the city council asked the committee, a committee be formed of two members of the Parks and Recs Commission and two members of the Arts Commission to work with staff to review ICF's proposal and determine the needs, feasibility, and make a recommendation to the city council, but also vetted through the two commissions for their recommendation. The Rakmoninov Committee comprised of Mr. Dick Bennett, who's our Parks Commissioner, Rozmik Gregorian, who's our Arts Commissioner, Armand Kevian, who's also an Arts Commissioner, and, I'm sorry?
Steve Roth.
Steve Rothfogbo, I shouldn't forget Steve. Those are the four members, and they work with staff on, on this assessment. The committee held several meetings, two with Mr. Tertavosian, the CEO, to kind of work through the, the event, the needs, look through the budget, the pro forma, that sort of thing. The total budget for the event is approximately $303,000. ICF is seeking support from the city in, in the form of two things. One would be a $50,000 seed grant to them initially to get the, the competition going. Second would be asking that the council appoint members to a fundraising committee from Glendale, from the greater Glendale area, that can raise an additional $35,000 to $77,000 to cover the financial needs of the event. Mr. Tertavosian is committed to raising an additional $50,000 from his own personal network. So all told, about $162,000 in cash contributions would be needed for the event. The other remaining amount for the $303,000 really is in kind. It is ticket sales, ad promotions, that sort of thing that would come from that, that As part of, of this process, we have found that Mr. Tertavosian's 501(c)(3) status is, is in change right now. The Secretary of State didn't have him on record as ICF. Therefore, he has asked Glendale Arts to serve as his fiduciary agent at this point or, or committee. And they have, in concept, agreed to that, and I think they may be here to speak on that as well if they want to. But although a contract hasn't been signed between the two groups, so I think they, they may still be in negotiations with that. Among the benefits of having such an event is, again, Glendale would be recognized as a cultural destination. With this event would bring people to Glendale who would not only spend money at the event, but spend money in our downtown, in our city, and potentially bring in some revenue to the city. This recommendation was approved by both commissions, the Arts and Culture Commission and the Parks Commission, so it has gone through both commissions. Commissioner Dick Bennett is here to speak on this if you'd like. I think he does want a few minutes. And Mr. Tertavosian is here to answer any questions you may have. Again, we met with him several times. My concern is, not only the seed money, I think, we, I'm not sure, you, you would have to determine where that comes from. The department doesn't have any money for that type of seed money. The other is, when we met with him, the, the fundraising arm of it from local committee, if that doesn't happen, I wasn't certain how he was gonna put the, the event on, but he claims he can do that. But he is here for any questions that you may have. So with that...
Mr. Starbird?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, let me, let me supplement Mr. Chapchan's comments just very briefly and, and take him a bit off the hot seat. I was approached by a council member earlier today or yesterday, assuming that because the report's on here, we're, of course, recommending that you fund it. We're not. I think the interest here, when it was first referred to the, the subcommittee, was, I think principally look at whether or not there was a benefit to try and, and pull resources together. I know it was left open to the committee, if you think there's some value that maybe the city contribute, you're certainly free to do that. This doesn't come to you with, frankly, staff support. In fact, my concern, that of George's, is that, frankly, we don't have this in the budget. It'll draw on needed resources. And frankly, at this time, with the cutbacks in budgets, it, it seems to send the wrong message. If indeed there were possibility to, to actually resource the community and support this, a great effort, probably a good undertaking. We cannot support and recommend however that you appropriate funds for it.
Ms. Friedman?
If we were to, what, what would happen to the seed money if they weren't able to raise the rest of the money to put the competition on?
My understanding is, it would be spent. Part of that would help pay for Mr. Tertavosian's time and effort in coordinating this event, and also hiring a grant writer.
So in other words, part of that money would go to, to paying him to try to raise the rest of the money?
That's my understanding.
Rather than just going towards putting the festival on?
Yeah, that's my understanding. And he is here for any questions. Commissioner Bennett, I think, would like to speak briefly on this, since he was a committee member.
I also have to fill out a card. I also have a card from Elisa Glickman. Well, arts. We'll start with Commissioner Bennett.
Go out now or after?
No, after, it's fine.
Just quickly, I would suggest, having spent some time with this, that you look at it from a strategic standpoint, and sort of the way I looked at it. I have something called a Strategic Plan for Arts in Glendale, which I assume everybody is familiar with. And in looking at this event, I sort of went through this book to see whether it was consistent with the book. And I couldn't find anything in here that wasn't very consistent with putting on an international piano concerto competition here in Glendale. And the other thing that I had, that the city of Glendale has, has developed, is the Arts and Economic Prosperity Report. And what that indicated was, is that putting on cultural events isn't really an expense, but that it actually brings in money into the city. And they used a company called American Arts to document that. So my thinking was, it was sort of strategic, not tactical, do we want to put on this? But is it consistent with the way we think about arts and culture in our city? And that's sort of what I've used. And I guess the other thing I would say is, if this, if something like this is gonna be successful, you really need to think about having it on an annual basis, because the first time is gonna be the least successful. But if you look at the history of annual cultural events, they're always most successful the third or fourth time. Thank you.
Thank you. Elisa Glickman?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Elisa Glickman. I'm the Associate Director for Glendale Arts. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to address you regarding this competition. We at Glendale Arts are very supportive in increasing, obviously, the number of arts activities that take place in the community. And we think that this competition is a really valuable asset to Glendale. But we did want to clarify one major point, which was that while we're open to discussions about being the fiscal sponsor for the event, as Mr. Chapchan stated, we are not currently in a contractual relationship with Rakmoninov Competition. So we don't want our involvement in the event to have any sort of, we don't want any of you to make your decision predicated on our involvement in the event, one way or another. We also think that, you know, we've had some preliminary discussions. We haven't had any clear negotiations regarding this event. We think that our conversations with both the competition side, as well as the Parks Department, is very encouraging. But again, there are a number of issues that will need to be hashed out before we enter into any sort of agreement. That being said, we're available for questions while we go through this process, and we appreciate your continued support of the arts, especially our arts organization, and increasing the arts in our community, which we think... increasing the arts in our community, which we think is of, obviously, of critical importance to both our organization, the Alex Theater, and looking at the city and the community as a cultural destination. So thank you for your time.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You've had some communications and meetings and so forth. Do you have some idea, and I'll ask a gentleman in a moment, but do you have some idea of the events that were held in, well, there was an event held in 2002, I'm familiar with that one, but then there were two events, one in 2005, one in 2008, Walt Disney Concert Hall. Do you have some idea of how successful those two events were?
In our conversations with the City of Pasadena, I mean, obviously, they were a huge success for those particular communities in terms of the amount of outside people that came into the community. What was unclear to us was how much the city had to give in order to get all of that participation and all of that goodwill from the general public, and to bring in some outside resources. This is a different competition than the ones that were seen at both Disney Concert Hall and the ones in Pasadena. Those were of sort of the next rung. This is a junior competition. That doesn't mean it's going to have any fiscal impact on the amount of people that come into the community to participate in that event. It just means it's different in nature. So it's hard to sort of theorize what type of revenue or income or participation we could realize from that based on past history.
Mr. Drayman.
Just a quick question and clarification. When you say the next rung, you don't mean in skill set, you mean in age?
In age. Thank you, sir.
And I would just add that, and I'll make some comments later as to where I am with this, but just in general, it's been my experience inside and outside of the industry that youth events are, you have, they're more staunchly attended, shall we say, often than adult competition.
They tend to be more participatory in nature, simply because people bring in their families, their aunts, their uncles, their grandmas. A lot of the competitors in this particular competition may not be local in nature, so that may impact the number of those ancillary relatives or friends that come in to participate. But that doesn't necessarily mean that that's going to impact the numbers in any great way. These are still high-talented, extraordinary students.
In the adult competition, they were from, they were internationals.
Correct. And this would be international in nature, from my understanding.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Is this the exact same group and the exact same people who put on the one that was in Disney Hall and in Pasadena?
That's my understanding. I do know that Armin, who originally brought the proposal to the city, is the Executive Director or the sort of Executive Point Person for all of the competitions. Whether or not his fundraising board or his working board are the same exact individuals, I'm not sure. It's my understanding from our preliminary conversations that he tries to include various members from the particular community that he's in to help do the doing of the individual event planning. So for the Pasadena events, for example, he brought in a lot of folks from the general Pasadena area to help him with building the infrastructure of that particular competition in terms of fundraising and doing the event planning, which is, what I'm gathering, is what he'd like to do here. So he may, there may be some crossover folks, but he is the same person who sort of spearheaded both efforts.
I guess, yeah, I guess that's sort of what my question is, does he come in with this group of supporters who have supported the other competitions?
I think that's a better question for Armin. Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any comments or questions? Mr. Tertavosian is in the audience, if there's any questions for him. Mr. Najarian?
I met with Mr. Tertavosian, oh, it was probably about nine months ago, when he first pitched the idea for the piano competition. It sounded, it sounded interesting. I thought it would bring some culture into Glendale. But we didn't talk any dollar amount or any budget, and I'm concerned at several items on the budget. The first is the jury honorarium of $20,000, and this is presumably going to go to the judges of the piano competition. On top of that, there's their airfare of $9,000. There's an orchestra involved of $37,000, and $10,000 for a conductor. There's room and board for the contestants, almost $50,000. And fundraising, these are the fees paid towards the fundraising, of $15,000. So I think there's a lot of eye-opening items in this budget. Eye-opening for me, you know, I have never been involved in an international piano competition before, but from the city's end, where we're asked to put in $50,000, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot in there, and I think in our current budget situation, where we're cutting left and right, I just, I'm hard-pressed to find the net value to the city in this rather extravagant budget.
Mr. Drayman.
Very similar to Mr. Najarian's experience was my experience with this. We all, from time to time, get sort of, the equivalent is to a cold call, so to speak, someone from the community who has an idea that he or she thinks would be beneficial to the city, and in this case, it was a cultural event, Mr. Tertavosian, and I met with him, and my reaction initially was very similar to Mr. Najarian's. I'm not so shocked at the budget, because this is pretty standard stuff with regard to these kinds of competitions. This is sort of a pageant structure, and that's pretty, pretty normal. However, whether it's normal or not, the dollar amount is a concern. And part of my problem with this was trying to zero in on exactly, exactly what the dollars were, what the requested commitment from the City of Glendale was, and to what extent we will or could end up on the hook. So what I suggested was that, oh, and by the way, I should add that the number that was suggested to me was one number. I heard from Mr. Weaver at a later date that it was a different number when he was spoken to, and I think, Mr. Chapchin, you mentioned to me yet another number. I think I understand all of that now. One was related to seed money, one was related to commitment to some assistance to them to find people within the community who would help them raise funds. All of that is wonderful. My interest, and Mr. Weaver raised the issue, gosh, a month or two ago?
A month.
With regard to all of this, was several-fold. One is, I think this would be very good for the city. And as Mr. Bennett pointed out, Commissioner Bennett, it does fit very neatly, very precisely, with what our strategic plan is for the arts in this city. It's something we don't look at all that often, or often enough, in my view. So what I believe was the appropriate procedure was to talk to the two Commissions, which most directly relate to this kind of a project. We're talking about city facilities, so facilities meant parks, in this case, and arts and culture, which meant, or a piano competition, a music competition, which meant the Arts and Culture Commission. And so the request was for a joint Subcommittee of the two to meet, to look at it, and start with the most basic question. Is this something that would be an appropriate event for Glendale, and would it fit? And so they met with Mr. Tertavosian and each other, and came to the conclusion that it was a good fit for the city. The next question, and if they felt so, then they would make a recommendation, and I applaud you for doing that, and I believe that that is the template that we need in this city in the arts. It's very similar, by the way, what we've all talked about in terms of wanting certain departments to bring projects to us, for us to determine finally whether we can afford to do it, whether it's appropriate, et cetera. Anyway, whether or not the city can afford to do this or should enter into this, that's a different question. That's what we're talking about tonight. I am, $50,000 is a lot of money, and having said all of that, and before I go any further about the $50,000, Mr. Chapchin, I am concerned about this issue of the 501(c)(3), the status of that. On the one hand, that can sound very, not sinister, but very concerning. On the other hand, there might be a very logical explanation. Can we get an explanation on that? And, well, let's start with that.
Yeah, I think, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a transition, there's a name change, and in that transition, the Secretary of State didn't have the new name, new nonprofit, in there. So we weren't comfortable recommending, or if we were going to come to Council, that city money go to an organization that the Secretary of State has yet to recognize. So we thought, at least Glendale Arts is a recognized organization. That would be a better way to go.
I will also agree with Elisa Glickman that the program in Pasadena was a very successful program. In that city, as I understand it, Bill Bogart, their mayor, that was a project he wholeheartedly bought into, went out and sold it to the larger community. And that may be my request or suggestion to my colleagues tonight, or to Mr. Tertavosian and our Commissioners, which is my desire at this point, because I do agree with Councilmember Najarian, that $50,000 is a chunk of change right now in this economy, is that we provide assistance in a different way, and that is to point him in the direction of those in the community that may be in a position to help raise funds and see what kind of traction there is. Lastly, and then I'll stop, but lastly, what does concern me is that we've sort of come right up to this deadline kind of thing, where, you know, if we don't make this decision right now, and it's not the right decision, they can't do it, and we lose it, and so, you know, I'm less concerned about that. I'm more concerned about getting the right fit of arts competition, arts and culture for the city, if it takes extra time to work it out and to find private donors, and for the city to help find private donors, and so be it. It takes a little longer.
I agree that it's a very intriguing idea. I think if it were to happen, it would be a great benefit to the city, and I would support it 100 percent. My worry is that we put up the money, and it doesn't happen. I'm actually more worried, though, about us going to the community and touting this, and then putting up the money, and it not happening. So if we're going to try to help this along in any way, and I don't want to begin the project of fundraising until everything is in place, and we know that this can happen, and that it's set up correctly, and everything's been looked at, and it all makes sense, because it is a tough time, and I would be uncomfortable if people donated even $20 to something that wasn't going to happen. So if I thought that if staff came back, and all the diligence had been done, and everything was investigated, and everything was lined up, and you said, yes, for $50,000, we're confident that the money would be raised, and we could have our competition, I might very well be in favor of finding the money somewhere, or of helping raise the money. But that's my primary concern. I also can't help but say that I do feel that with this kind of a project, that the salary for this promotional group should come only after the projects happened. I would hate to raise the money, have them take their $50,000 out of the top of the budget, which is where it is right now, and then go away. However that's going to happen, I think that that should be sort of afterwards, or on the bottom. And I don't know how to make that into a contract, and I don't know whether it's different if you're a 501(c)(3) or if you're a for-profit group, but I think we need to kind of figure all of that out.
And maybe I can clarify as well. The event in Pasadena was, no city money was used for that. Mayor Bogart helped raise $200,000 out of his own personal network, and to be fair to Mr. Tertavosian, he raised the other $800,000. That was a million-dollar production. So he did do that. He does have a track record. He did the two events in Los Angeles as well, so there is a track record. And my concern also was, what happens to the $50,000? And you're absolutely right, Mr. Drayman, or Councilman Drayman, we weren't beholden to his deadline, I mean. He wanted to do this quickly. We wanted to make sure that we really bent to the project, and he's willing to move that deadline further out for the event. So instead of fall, he could do it in January, but we wanted to make sure that we, you know, we crossed our Ts and dotted our Is in this process.
Just to, you know, to conclude, you know, assuming that we can do all that, I do think that this would be a wonderful thing to have here.
Yeah.
I think it will be a real benefit to the community. It's something that's perfect for the Alex, perfect for Glendale, and assuming we can get all of that in place, I think it could be very exciting.
So I guess what he would be looking from Council is, if you have names of people, individuals in the community that can help him raise money, I mean, we certainly can point him in the direction where there may be some grants, but I think...
Well, once again, I want to be sure that before we do that, we know that this actually has a good chance of happening, and everything is in place, if we're going to use kind of the diocese to raise money.
Mr. Drayman, then Mr. Weaver.
I wanted to add one thing. I absolutely agree with you, Councilmember Friedman. I'm not suggesting that we use the diocese specifically to raise money. What I'm saying is, though, that individuals who may want to invest in this program out in the, in the community can make decisions, and they're, make an evaluation as to whether they want to risk funds for such a project. I'm just loath to do that with the city's, our citizens' money, when I don't have more information. I agree, however, that, you know, and maybe there is more that we haven't heard. I would like to hear from Mr. Tertavosian before we come to some conclusion here.
Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, I think in a good economy, this would be a good thing for Glendale. There's been countless groups that have stood before us and said, "A cultural event for Glendale would bring people in. It'll make us a destination." Heard that for 10, 12 years. Yes, there are a lot of projects out there that would be good for Glendale. But I look at, I have a fiduciary responsibility, and this economy start talking about, well, identifying contributor $50,000, sunk cost. We may never see the light of day of a penny. It says we should appoint people to a fundraising committee. Does that mean city staffers? Or are we supposed to go out and find these well-heeled people? If we're going to do it, let Glendale Arts, the Arts Council, let them go out and find these well-heeled people. And I go to, I think we all get the Pasadena Magazine, put it up in your thumb through, and you see all the big social events they put on Pasadena. I've gone to a few, and I feel out of place. You can tell the people that are in the social world in Pasadena are well-heeled, much more so than I do at Glendale.
I beg your pardon? I beg your pardon?
Well-heeled, yes. They are. I mean, go to an event, $200, $300 pop, you know, and jammed. Pasadena and Glendale are two different cities. I don't think you can look at them the same way. And then a third thing, give direction to Parks staff to negotiate the business details and the profit lost. Again, that's money. That's staff time, whatever. And no guarantee it'll work. So in this economy, while it's a good idea, I just can't see doing it until everything is in place and ready to go. There's so many, as we all know, there's been so many groups have come in and said, "Can you help us financially?" So where do you draw the line? This is probably going to be a very good one, but I can't see it today.
Okay, why don't we hear from Armin Tertavosian, who's in the audience, and he can say a few words? You'll have to fill a card out, no, not, not right now, sir, but afterwards. And we need your name.
Armin Tertavosian. Good evening, Councilmembers. Well, our organization exists more than 10 years, and we have a, as organization track record of producing many events, not just Rachmaninoff competitions, and I'm here to answer your questions, if you have.
Anyone have any specific questions?
I'll ask a couple of questions.
Mr. Drayman.
Mr. Tertavosian, one of the concerns you keep hearing expressed up here over and over, and by some staff, is the concern about the City of Glendale getting sort of, for lack of a better word, stuck financially with a project that it appears that a $50,000 allocation sort of takes... sort of takes, it sort of underwrites your risk on the event, so that you can go forward and raise funds, and then at the same time, you're asking us to assist in that for you. How do you respond to that in terms of the city getting stuck with that $50,000 bill?
Well, I don't think that putting $50,000, it puts some kind of city in a position that they will lose the money, because first of all, we have no track record of canceling project. If project will start, that will be delivered. The issue here is that if we deliver the project, we will have all bills paid, or we will have some leftovers. And my concern is only to have adequate support provided by the city and with the community of the city to raise the funding needed. And for raising that $170,000, which is the total amount, cash amount for the project, if the city will put $50,000 or raise $50,000 from any sources, and we come up with $50,000, the whole issue is about $70,000 to be raised during almost one-year period. And that $70,000 to be raised, we have five different sources to raise that money. Even if 50 percent of that sources will not work, again, I see enough funding coming in almost to break even with the project budget. So, for the fundraising issue, I don't see too big problem, because we raised much more money than $70,000 during all these years.
My other question, you've probably heard concern about the 501(c)(3) status.
We don't have a problem with 501(c)(3), because I explained to staff members that when we changed the name of the organization, probably in a paperwork for the state, they didn't change the name. That's why they couldn't match the number. But we are a 501(c)(3) organization.
Oh, I assume that at some point, you could demonstrate that.
Well, we have that paperwork, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Draymond.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Well, what does the city council want to do? Any direction for the staff? Or did you receive enough direction to proceed?
I do actually have, but it may seem somewhat indirect as relates to the Rachmaninoff Jr. competition. I don't know if that's the exact correct name, but mainly, I think, to our staff and our commissioners, and that is, I think that our commissioners, particularly Parks and Rec, and Arts and Culture should be involved in finding projects, arts projects, that are of benefit to the city, identifying those, and bringing them forward. It's partly our job to sit here and say, "That one will work," or "That one won't work." This one brings funding with it, et cetera, et cetera. So, that would be my hope, and that is not particularly a direction to Mr. Tertatovozian, but it is input to our boards and commissions. They're not potted plants. Supposedly, we appoint them to these positions to actually help us invest in arts and culture, music, and the fine arts, et cetera. So...
I guess my direction would be that I'm interested in having staff do some investigation into this, to see if this works in the same way we would, I think, with any proposal that came forward. I don't exactly know what form that would take, but it seems like there's some uncertainty on the part of Park's department as to kind of what the ultimate investment would be, how much of a sure thing this is, all of those sorts of things. And I feel like until we have a little bit more information, it's very hard for anyone to really to make much of a recommendation. And I think it's intriguing enough to want to see us go down that road, but I'm not ready to commit any funds right now, or to promise to be of assistance in terms of fundraising, even until we know, until we have more information.
Yes, Mr. Starver.
Well, let me try this on for size. Without the commitment of any money, recognizing your staff's recommendation to not commit funds, recognizing you at least have a subcommittee of the two commissions who have an interest in continuing to explore the viability of this, and I see in the budget, there's, in addition to $50,000, there's a number of fundraising efforts that are identified in here. I count just offhand over $100,000 of local fundraising beyond basic ticket sales. There's a gala fundraiser, there's additional ticket sales, there's the seed money. So, as Mr. Tertatovozian pointed out, this isn't just $50,000, it's more like $170,000 needs to be resourced from the community. I think to have the committee and the two commissions discuss whether they think it's viable to resource that level of funds from the community, and if so, how they'd suggest we go about doing that, in addition to maybe doing some additional vetting of the program to address this concern, and let's see what they come up with.
They've got to realize that all the nonprofits that are trying to raise money today with events are not being successful. For one, just look at, oh, one, come on, motorcycle ride.
Oh, Love Ride.
Love Ride.
Love Ride.
Cancelled it.
Over $1 million a year.
Yeah. That couldn't even be close. They'd been successful how many years? So, the economy is hurting. It's tough.
My thought is, while acknowledging that the city, at least at this point, is not proposing to put any city resources into it, is it viable to think that the funds necessary could be resourced from the community? And if so, how would they go about doing that?
This has got to be, I wouldn't bet on it.
Sort of toss it back to the committee and the commissions.
But then work at it.
Continue to see if it's viable.
That's where I'm at.
I would only add that in my lifetime, I've produced literally, literally hundreds of productions, legit productions, at regional theaters across the country. I've never had a single stop at a city council dais to ask for co-production with the city, with the municipality, so this is a little unusual, and so, anyway, I would certainly second that idea.
Actually, I don't get to make a motion.
No, no, I didn't mean literally second. Mr. City Manager, I recognize you are not an elected official. I meant that in a figurative way. I would endorse the idea.
I'm curious when we'll hear about the illegitimate productions you've done.
We have a blog for that out there, as I'm sure you know, so...
All right. Thank you, Mr. Draymond.
You will have to wipe your feet off after you go to that site, so...
We certainly can do that, if the committee members are willing to do that, and I think this obviously throws off the timing for the next event, so maybe a year after, if they determine this is feasible.
There'll be another day.
If that's the consensus, then we have direction.
Yes.
Perhaps Park's Commissioner Khan should be involved in part of this exploration.
No question about it. No question about it.
All right. Next, please.
Well, next item on the agenda, it's Director of Administrative Services Finance regarding Comprehensive Annual Financial Report to the City of Glendale for June 30, 2009. At C1 is a motion accepting the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. At C2 is a motion accepting the management letter and the single audit report.
Mr. Starver.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Let me go to Bob Elliott, Director of Finance, for a quick overview of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is being presented to you to receive and file this evening. Bob, I know something you'd like to spend hours poring over, but...
Please.
Literally. And we are prepared to do that this evening, if you'd like.
I thought we'd do a quick overview of the CAFR this year. We've put a lot of work into reformatting it, and I know it's 173 pages of reading enjoyment for those that are interested. I'd like to thank Lily Fang and her staff for putting the hundreds and hundreds of hours in putting this report together. What I wanted to do today, or tonight, is give you a brief introduction and overview of the CAFR and how it works. We didn't do that last year, and I think it caused a lot of confusion. I'll introduce our independent city auditor, Jeff Altshuler, who's a partner with McGladrey and Pullen. Peter George is our manager. They're here in the audience, and I'm going to have them come up and discuss the single audit report very briefly, and the management letter, which is more or less the report card that we get from them, and then we'll have some questions and comments. How the CAFR is put together is, there's a transmittal letter in the beginning, and that's, you've got to remember, the CAFR is designed for the financial industry and that audience, and how they view the city. So, we include a lot of facts and figures, and the economic profile of the city in the transmittal letter, and that's meant to be used in conjunction with the management's discussion analysis, or the MDNA, and we'll talk about that in a minute. It has all the city officials, as well as an organizational chart, and then the bulk of the report, obviously, is the financial section, which gives the results for the year ended, as well as the snapshot in time, or the balance sheet for the city. The MDNA, as I mentioned, is basically an executive summary. The CAFR, the way it's laid out, is kind of a top-down financial statement, where it's basically a consolidated viewpoint at the start, and kind of works its way down in detail. So, the MDNA tries to summarize that in plain English, for better or for worse, and it explains some of the financial highlights. It includes our data on our, all our debt and our bond ratings. And then it jumps into the statements, and again, it's a top-down statement, and what we have at the beginning of the financial section is the government-wide. You can think of that as a consolidated financial, kind of in corporate terms. And then it moves down into the fund level, where we have what we call major funds, basically, as the name dictates, is are the large funds of the city. The general fund is always a major fund. Then we have the redevelopment agency, and the CIP, or the other governmental major funds. And then it has enterprise funds that are major categories for us, is electric, sewer, and water. Following that, we then have the notes, which is basically the explanation of everything backing up the numbers. And then we move on to what's called the non-major funds. Those are the smaller funds within the statement, and then followed by the internal service funds. Those are our funds within the city that service other pieces of the city itself, and for items like insurance or workers' compensation. After that, we have an unaudited section, known as the statistical section, has 21 various schedules that include a variety of items, assessed valuations, top taxpayers, electrical, number of electrical customers, principal employers, and on and on. Just to give you a brief overview, at the government-wide level, and this is kind of the, again, this is kind of the consolidated viewpoint, we break it down into government and business type, and that is the statement of net assets. In kind of common speak, it's the balance sheet, assets and liabilities. The net assets at the bottom is basically the equity or the fund balance, if you will, in kind of common terms. At the end of the year, our net assets, our equity, was $1.6 billion for all the combined operations of the city.
Yeah. Before we move off this slide, don't confuse that, however, with your cash position or fund balance available for appropriation. You have a lot of fixed assets, land, buildings, facilities...
Infrastructure.
...that are part of the infrastructure, that are part of the $1,653 million in net assets that you carry. However, you do have a rather large cash reserve in many of the funds as well.
The second major statement is the statement of activity, and again, that is commonly known as the income statement. We do it a little bit different. We start with the expenditures first. Again, it's broken out with the government and business sections separate, the governmental or the general fund, and the other special revenue funds, debt service funds. The business activities are the enterprise funds, GWP, sewer, so on and so forth. The revenues are in the different categories. Summary of the total revenues for the year was $581 million from, in those different categories, against expenditures of $537 million. So, our net increase in fixed assets, or our equity position, was $44 million, to give us, again, the $1.6 billion in net assets at the end of the year.
Where's that $44 million sit?
It's spread throughout all the different funds. But this is, you know...
But they're not liquid, though.
No, not necessarily.
Combination, probably.
The other deliverable tonight outside of the audit report is the single audit. That's the report that the auditors produce. It's our report card to our federal granting agencies, which are delineated within the report. During the year, we accepted almost $32 million in federal grants. The single audit, as its name implies, is having the auditors perform a single audit for all those different grants. Years ago, you used to have auditors from all the different agencies come in, and they decided, under OMB 133, to consolidate that and have a single audit for all the different grants. And so, this report is submitted to the federal government for any items that are noted or questioned costs, and I'll let Jeff to speak to that. And then the management letter is basically the observations of the auditor, noting any potential weaknesses, or significant deficiencies, or other comments they may have. And that's basically our report card in how we operate the finance department. With that, I'll invite Jeff to the podium, and he can discuss that a little bit.
Bob. Councilmembers and staff, and the mayor, I guess, when they come back, the Honorable Mayor, I want to thank you for allowing us to present today. Bobby, you did an excellent job talking about the financial statements. Part of our deliverables, especially on the single audit, is to go through and look at internal controls and how they relate to financial reporting, and also on compliance, based on the federal money that you did receive, and what we consider to be major programs, because we don't test 100 percent of your federal money, because there's $32 million spread out amongst a lot of different funding sources. So, what we do is, we determine what the major funds are. We then go through and say, look at internal controls, do a test of controls for a number of the major processes that we consider to be key to your organization, and then, excuse me, and based on that, we have to report on our single audit, and including in that report, in the single audit, if there's any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that we find. I'd be happy to report that there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, as noted on that screen. A little bit on the definition of what a material weakness is. What we do is, we look at whether the city has key controls in place, and if they have key controls, whether those controls are working effectively, and then we do a test of those controls. And based on what we had, all the testing that we have done, we have found that there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. If we had any, those would be included in the single audit report. We did, however, issue a separate letter, what we call a management letter, and that letter includes other control deficiencies, which would not meet the definition of what a material weakness or significant deficiency is. So, if a control is either not in place, or a control is in place but not working properly, and we feel that there would be more than a material adjustment that might hit the city, that the city might not find because of this missing control, or the control's not working, we would call that a material weakness. A significant deficiency would be if there was a control that was not in place, or if it was in place but not working efficiently, or effectively, and that there would be more than an insignificant adjustment to your financial statements. That would be a significant deficiency. So, when I talk about other control deficiencies, I'm talking about those matters that would be less than inconsequential, so it's a very small, a small level. The bar is raised real low, I guess. So, we did have some of those other control deficiencies that we noted, and you have that actually in a separate letter, and I don't know if you all have brought that, okay, so you all have that, and I'd be happy to answer any of those questions that you have on those other control deficiencies. We also have what we call suggestions or best practices, and those would be items that are really not internal control-related, but that we had noticed that the city might want to look at, that might improve either the operation of the city, or what we've seen in other cities, that might help the city in its operations. And so, all, both of those types of items, the bottom two, are included in that other management letter. So, in the single audit letter, which is the main compliance letter that is sent over to the federal clearinghouse, there will be no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. to the federal clearinghouse, there will be no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, which is very good on the city. So it was an unqualified opinion per se on the compliance side, which is really good. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I have a question.
Any questions from Sam?
Yeah. How much weight should an outside individual layperson put on other control deficiencies and trying to magnify it out of proportion? I mean, they're not material with weaknesses, they're not significant deficiency, but in the past, we've had individuals look into the other control deficiencies and try to totally discredit the city's operation.
Yeah. And I'll go back to the definition of what an other control deficiency is. And that is, like I said before, it's either a control is missing or a control is there but not working properly, but we feel would only result in a less than inconsequential result or a misstatement on the city's financial statement. So it's a very, very low-
Minor.
Yeah, minor infraction, I guess you could say.
If I may add, those items were delineated in the staff report and we're already taking steps to modify our procedures. The control deficiencies were, we need to work better with the departments to get their invoices submitted to us on time. Sometimes they're late in giving us the invoices, so we don't pay them timely.
Oh, the city of L.A. pays too quickly.
Yeah, well, that was, that was one issue we had. The other one was in how we record some revenues. It depends on when the revenue is received, whether we record it at the fund level or the entity-wide level at the end of the year. And we will put a procedure in place to catch those as the year end comes and then we're preparing the statement. So those issues are minor, but we will put procedures in place so those don't happen again. The other items that are the suggestions, best practices are noted, the, basically looking at our internal service funds. We do have some deficits in our internal service funds. We will be addressing those during the budget process. One is a debt covenants checklist. We do that, but we don't have a formal procedure. We will be modifying that and coming up with a procedure. And then a capital asset impairment policy. That's a fairly new rule from GASB where we have to identify a procedure to record or how we deal with a capital asset that becomes impaired. Example, that would be a utility power plant or a turbine that becomes unusable because some new environmental law. So we have to have a procedure in place that would address how we handle that and book it accordingly. Other than that, I think we're doing a pretty decent job and I thank all the accounting staff for their efforts.
That example you made, you specifically mentioned that situation, would it also be that a boiler just sort of blows up and needs specifically when legislation-
It depends. I mean, there's insurance issues involved. I mean, it's typically something that you plan on having for, in service for an existing amount of time and something happens where its life is shortened or its productivity is highly diminished for some reason. So we'll put a policy together to identify those.
And to, I guess to elaborate, Ms. Councilman Weaver, it was an excellent question. I want to also say that other control deficiencies below significant deficiencies are not even required to be put in writing. The city has asked us to put all matters in writing. So some organizations that say, you know what, we're only required to get this verbally, let's get it verbally and leave it off the table, I commend the city for asking for everything in writing.
We belong extremely, extremely much in transparency.
Absolutely. And I commend you for that.
Mr. Starbird.
Mr. Mayor, before we maybe move on past the auditor's component of this, I think for the public, the important part of the audit is summed up in really one paragraph right in the middle of their letter that's included in the comprehensive annual financial report. I'd like to read it just very quickly. "In our opinion," that is of our auditors, "the financial statements referred to previously present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city as of June 30, 2009, and the respective changes in financial position and cash flows were applicable thereof and the respective budgetary comparison for the general fund for the year then ended in conformity with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." That is the key provision, that all of the data in here in your, in their audit and your financial report are presented fairly in keeping with standards established for governmental entities in the United States. They're not passing on whether or not, for example, the balance you have in the general fund is the appropriate balance, but they're saying the numbers we have here, you can rely on because they've checked them and they're presented fairly. Disagree on the policy issues about the amounts, for example, but they're presented fairly and that's transparency.
And as you indicated in our discussions, the city probably is the envy of many, many, most cities in the state of California, the position that we're in financially. Considering that the state government is $15 billion in debt already, most likely going to be coming at us again.
And Mr. Weaver, that actually gets to the numbers. But back to just this, this document and the auditor's role, as Bob pointed out, I think we do more than a decent job. I think you'll find embedded here in your budget, not only an effort to be transparent above and beyond, but to frankly do things absolutely the right way in keeping with all of the standards. And frankly, that's why you'll see in our management letter, we want to know all of the comments, whether they're material, significant or less than that, and we want to address them because we know that's important here. With respect to the substance of the report here, though, I will tell you, I think your general financial condition is one that you can be very proud of, especially in the context of the economy that we are within and what we see happening in public agencies around us. Do we have some challenges? No question about it. And the auditors have pointed out, we have to address our internal service funds. Those are a group of funds that provide support to all of the other operations and we have some challenges there and we're going to need to address them. But in all other respects, the city is in very sound financial condition because of the decisions that you've made in staying within our means as we plan our budgets and the numbers in this document reflect that. And I think you can be proud of it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Need a motion.
I'd like to move eight, E.1 and two.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members. Freeman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
May I change that to a C? Eight, eight.
Eight C. Eight C.1 and two.
Not eighty.
Yes. I heard C.
Next, please.
Nine, under hearings, nine, a director of development services regarding intention to levy and collect assessments in the Adams Square Business Improvement District for the calendar year 2010, based on the annual report. Nine, a one resolution confirming the intention to levy and collect assessments within the Adams Square Business Improvement District through 2010. And nine, a two motion to extend the terms of the management agreement with Adams Square Merchant Association for the calendar year 2010.
Mr. Starbird.
Yes, let me go to Phil Lenzavey.
For a brief.
For a very brief report.
Mr. Mayor, this is a follow-up item that you started, initiated two weeks ago to confirm the levy of assessments in the Adams Square Business Improvement District and also to extend their agreement. They are on an annual schedule, yearly, that is. Montrose is on a five-year schedule. Next year, you will have both of them in front of you. I guess just remind you, it is a public hearing if we could open that and then I don't think there's anybody left to comment.
I will open the public hearing. There's no speaker cards. I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move nine, A.1 and two.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council members. Freeman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Next, please.
Brings us back to our communications where discussion is limited items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager, mayor, further matter to the appropriate department for an investigation or report.
All right. The first card is from Ruslan Birukov and followed by Margaret Hammond.
Mr. Mayor and the members of the council and staff, thank you very much for giving this opportunity to speak for you. It's very kind of you. You know, I'm Russian and if I speak with a heavy accent, I'm terribly sorry.
We need your name for the record.
Ruslan Birukov.
Thank you.
Ruslan Birukov. And I'm here to introduce a new cultural, so to speak, entity appearance, a Glendale Philharmonic Orchestra. You know, the orchestra has been formed pretty spontaneously in spite of the fact that we were thinking about it for a few years. And it happened that about a year ago, I, I'm a cellist, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that. I'm a cellist, I'm a musician, a professionally trained musician. So I was invited to perform at the First Baptist Church of Glendale. And I would imagine that probably everybody's seen that building, but probably haven't even thought that there is actual church. It's located on Louise and Wilson Street. And you know, church been there for 100 years and it's huge sanctuary which can sit close to 1,000 people. And the pastor there, the previous pastor was very smart and very healthy man. He lived until 101 years old. And two years ago, unfortunately, he passed away and his successor found a church, huge building with congregation which had 30 people and 35 pianos in the building. And so the building was put for the renovation, obviously. And last year, when I was invited to play there, I was absolutely amazed with the quality of the acoustics of that particular venue. And also, I'm not sure who is, who was the architect of the building, but the person who built it did truly magnificent job. The church, when the services are performed, and it's actually, it does feel like a church, but it built in the form of amphitheater with a balcony. So when the performances are done there, it does feel like a concert hall with absolutely perfect acoustic. And you know, all my friends, professional musicians and, you know, PR agents and many, many managers, producers, we are absolutely, you know, they are so surprised to find this forgotten jewel of Glendale, which is located right in downtown of Glendale, right next to the Alex Theater. So the pastor started talking to me about, you know, starting a concert series there of some kind. And I felt quite excited and honored to be offered, you know, to do such thing. And a few months ago, wonderful friend of mine, his name is Mikhail Avetisen, he's a conductor and we frankly, we were on the party. And Mikhail was talking to me, you know, I want to do an orchestra. I think that there is a need in the orchestra in the city of Glendale, in the big orchestra. And I've seen Mikhail performing and conducting orchestras here in Glendale and all of those performances were sold out. And he's absolutely exceptional, absolutely astonishing conductor. So everything sort of came together and we decided to give a try to an orchestra. And what happened next, we booked 12 dates pretty much in the First Baptist Church of Glendale. Now, this particular enterprise is independent, it's, it's not actually connected with a church, it's not the, you know, church entity. And we formed, I formed a foundation, it is a Positive Motions Foundation, which is 501(c)(3). And the DBA of Positive Motions Foundation happened to be Glendale Philharmonic Orchestra. And so here I am introducing our first event, which is going to happen on January 9th at 7:30. And I would like to invite everybody to come and join us if you'd like to. And you receive the packages, you know, with posters and, you know, I also thought it probably would be good idea to put my resume there and the CD, you know, that, you know, you probably don't know me, and the bio of the conductor. Okay, so that was important thing to say. Yes, we have complimentary tickets for you, so please feel free to ask if it's, you know, needed. I'm not here to ask for any money.
Bravo, bravo!
Yes, we are trying to, in spite of the charity, charity direction of the project, but we are trying to run it, you know, financially somewhat successful. And this particular performance is based on the box office very much. And you know, so far, absolutely everyone who we would be talking to about the orchestra, including musicians on the first hand, gets so excited, so inspired, so motivated with this idea. Musicians agree to practically donate their services for the, and we are talking about first-class musicians, absolutely first-class musicians. I can introduce you the list of the musicians which are going to perform on the, on the performance, truly astonishing, astonishing. Now, the wonderful composer, Andrei Rubtsov, he is a rising star. He is the first oboe player in Russian National Orchestra and assistant of, conductor of London Philharmonic Orchestra, composed a piece which we are going to give the world premiere. Ah, cut us.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. What pitch is that? What key is that?
I'm a cellist. Our range is lower.
We're the city council, our range is even lower.
Go ahead and wrap it up and then have a seat because we make comments after.
Sure. Sure, yes. So he composed the piece, Andrei Rubtsov composed the piece. It's probably one-of-a-kind piece, a concerto for two cellos with the orchestra. And a wonderful friend of mine, Maxim Viligkin, he's an artistic director of classical underground concert series, which happened to be an exceptionally successful classical music concert series. In fact, LA Times printed an article about it, Gramophone Magazine printed an article about it. So we are going to give a world premiere on the January 9th of that piece. And also Matthew Snyder, who is absolutely incredible recording engineer, Grammy award winning, I think he has two Grammys for his recordings and he records musicians like Link Harrel, he records L'Harmonie Music Society, he records Santa Fe Festival. So he is going, he agreed to do audio and video recording of our performance. So I hope that we will have something interesting also later on to show.
Thank you very much. We'll have some comments after the other speakers.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Margaret Hammond, followed by Michael Tehan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond and I'm again bringing up the bulky item pickup. There are still piles of trash all over Glendale and the same ones were not picked up from last week. So they're on Boynton and Palmer in that area. I don't know what's going on. The number to call, if you have any pride in your city, you will do so, 818-548-3916. And if I sound angry about this, I am. I don't understand why people can't cooperate in trying to make their city a better place to live in by getting rid of all the trash, especially when it's a free service. That I can't understand. If the city were charging, I'd say, okay, then I can understand it, but I don't. And the other thing that I come to you is the doctor's house. December the 19th at 6:30, we're going to have the candlelight tour, which will be done in the way that the Victorians celebrated Christmas. Your friends and neighbors are the ones that are there to greet you, they want to see you. Come and enjoy it. They're the volunteers, part of the huge volunteer force of our city. And they were there last week when it was raining and there were people who turned up. And they did the tours and served refreshments and there's entertainment. All of this for a $2 donation. I don't think there's a better bargain and it's a chance to see one of the jewels of our city. Now, my next thought is on my water, A. Water and Power Bill, since I have properties, I'm not, I'm not going anywhere where to say anything further. My electric total, and this is on a rental that's vacant and has been vacant for five months, as many other properties are. The electric total was $17.17. The water total was $26.42. And then the service by other city departments was $57.86. In the breakdown of these, the actual energy charge, $0.62. Electric customer charge, $15.39. Fuel adjustment, et cetera, et cetera. Fuel adjustment, et cetera, et cetera. The water service, my actual water delivery, because I had, there's nobody living there, it's not being used, $1.46. The water customer charge was $22. The rubbish, which there's nobody living there, there's no rubbish to put out, $22.76. The sewer operating cost, $33.70. Amazing. And this bill ends up $89.50 for a vacant house. I do think that sometimes, and I've tried talking, and I'm just told, "No, you have to pay it, and that's that." What do you do? You take out, turn off everything, and all the electric and the water and so forth, and there's nothing operating. There's no refrigerator, there's nothing in the place. There I am. Actually, the total ended up, the actual total ended up being $104.50. Okay, I'm just bringing up water and power, what we're charged, and is this fair? I don't know. And then there's another point. Last week, I almost, I was, had a hard time getting here. I coming, driving west on Broadway, when I got to the corner of Glendale and Broadway, I had to sit through two traffic lights. And you know why? Because the traffic going north on Glendale blocked the traffic, could not get through for two lights. I don't know why people are grinning. I don't think it's funny, right outside the city hall, that you can't even get through, and they're supposed to have some kind of red light system or somebody taking care of it. And there it is on the corner, trying to get through that corner. And that was, what, last Tuesday? And so, I do want to bring that point up, that I don't know whether it's operating or how it's operating, but it's true, there's still idiots that want to block traffic. And the other thing I do want to mention, and I happen to watch Channel 6, which all the way through, not, well, Larry Zarian was on, and of course, he has to get in his own publicity, public whatever, presentation for his personal whatever. But kudos to Richard, to Rick Wells and his staff for Channel 6. If you have time, watch it. He does a terrific program on all the different city events and the departments, things like our poster contest for the children and so forth. He does a terrific job, and very professional. I mean, I was quite, I sat there and went through the whole hour of looking at it, and I do want to commend him. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael Tehan, followed by John McMahon.
Good evening, councilmembers and staff. My name is Michael Tehan. I am the president of the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council. I want to first thank Councilmember Najarian for gracing us with his presence last week. We've made a considerable effort to attract A-listers to our event, and I think that we're two-for-two. So, thank you for that. We're looking forward to the next candidate. I also, in a rather kind of odd fashion, think that I have to thank the cadre of developers that showed up last week to give an earful to the planning department for trying to reorganize the zoning commission, the zoning commissioner for Glendale. Thankful, because things have been rather quiet at the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council, and we're looking for an issue to get drummed up about, and I think this is just perfect. Anytime that a group of developers who have heretofore been rather quiet because of the economic conditions want to throw a wrench in what is, I think, a laudable effort to reform the zoning administrator's position to make it more amenable to the community, that just, that just puts money in our bank. I want you to know that we are, all of us, we haven't had a vote yet, but I think that I can pretty confidently say, all 19 member organizations within the coordinating council are four-square behind your efforts to reform this position. We will lend you whatever support is necessary. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John McMahon.
Hello, how are you? John McMahon, 509 Cumberland. Looks like I slipped in just in time. First of all, I just want to say, as we near the end of the year, one of the things I'm thankful for is all your help, and includes everyone on the council here, as well as Mr. Garcia and Ms. Anzone in their office, for the help with the wireless ordinance. I sent a couple of you an email earlier today, just because I noticed when we got the comments back, industry added about 80 pages on to what our group had already put, just a laundry list of stuff, and it's easy to sort of just get that all, and it looks like a lot of noise when it's all in there. So, just to really simplify things, just speaking for myself, there is, there's one thing, one small thing, that I feel like if we don't get this added in the wireless ordinance, we failed somewhere along the way. And what that is, is a reasonable residential setback. The reason that this whole process, we went underway with this, is because of a tower in a residential neighborhood, and there's nothing in the ordinance to prevent that. And that, you know, before it went to one city planning group, and now it'll go to a different city planning group, but we could end up in the exact same situation, which is a different set of people. So, that one thing is to have a reasonable, so like a 12-to-15-foot setback from a property in a residential area where a massive tower, 30, 40 feet, like the one we were dealing with last year, could not be put in next to a house. That's it. So, that's my take. It's a lot shorter than 100 pages of reading, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, any comments? I'll start by welcoming you to the city of Glendale. We're very, very happy that you've graced us with your presence.
Thank you very much.
And with the orchestra. And I apologize, you could have spoken not for five minutes, but you could have spoken for three minutes earlier in the meeting.
That's okay.
And talked about your...
He enjoyed it.
Yeah, I know he enjoyed it. He's a musician.
I think five minutes is better than three, so.
Probably saw the harmony. But anyway, I wonder if we could, if he is a nonprofit and so forth, I wonder if we could quickly just run some Channel 6. His poster is quite eye-catching.
That would be so helpful.
I wonder if we could run a Channel 6.
Here is the actual poster. I don't know if I can...
Yeah, I don't know. We'll check with our legal department, and we'll see if the fact that it's the Glendale Philharmonic Orchestra, whether we can put you on Channel 6 or a few...
That would be very...
That's enough. I'll tape it in the windows.
Because everything is happening pretty spontaneously, pretty quickly, we, of course, we practically have less than a month to deliver the news about the performance and about the concert series, you know, to the, to our public. However, I have to tell you, we truly feel that there is a need in such an event, in the appearance of the orchestra and concert series of that kind, in, because frankly, without any advertisement, there is only website built right now, which is glendalephilharmonic.com. We already sold 35 tickets, and there have been no advertisement whatsoever, nothing, just nothing. We just printed, yeah.
We ought to get to the Glendale Arts and to the Glendale Arts and Culture Commission.
Yes.
Well, there'll be plenty of people, I believe, who are going to be wanting to help you and wanting to get involved with you and your...
We welcome any kind of help and any kind of support, because right now, there are just a few people practically working to run the orchestra and the musicians, of course, it's a large group of the musicians. So, frankly, I thought it would be really great if you could have interns from colleges, you know, helping us, or volunteers would be really great also. Any kind of help, any kind of support from anyone will be greatly appreciated, and, you know, we welcome everyone to join us specifically on our performance, because it's going to be a lot of fun, that's for sure.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's very kind.
And then, Mr. McMahon, I couldn't agree with you more on your observations. I received the email, and it'll certainly be something I'll be very, very interested in making sure that...
I think I forwarded it on already.
That we have that.
Staff.
Are there any other comments? Ms. Friedman?
Just that I would like to ask staff to be sure that the gentleman from the Glendale Phil is put in touch with Glendale Arts and the Arts Commission, so that he has contacts in both places, and perhaps they can help him a little bit with some of the promotion and other aspects. Thank you for coming, Mr. McMahon. I received your email. I forwarded it to the city attorney and read completely. And I just want to wish everybody at home a very happy holiday. We're going to be gone for a few weeks, so don't look for us next week or the week after. But I hope everyone has a very happy and safe New Year and holiday.
And we'll see you next year.
So, we don't have a meeting next week?
No, we do not.
Well, you can come.
You'll do.
We do not.
Motion to adjourn unless there's any...
All right, next, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, we are adjourned.
Is there a second?
I'll second it up.